Oh, Rob. We're gonna get started here in just a moment, taking care of some business up here. It's all right. All right. Are we ready to go there, council member? Chief? Are we ready to go? I don't want to keep you. You gotta have fun, right? So anyways, we're gonna call the Santee City Council meeting to order, let the record deflect that all council members are present. And tonight, the invocation will be given by Pastor Craig Barnett of Carlton Oaks Baptist Church. Craig earned his Bachelor of Science degree from the United States Naval Academy, commencing a distinguished 20-year tenure in the United States Marine Corps. Semper Fi, brother, culminating in his promotion to the rank of Lieutenant Colonel before retiring in 2012, a period for which we are deeply grateful. Post-military service, Craig pursued theological studies at the Master Seminary in Los Angeles, California, attaining his Master of Divinity degree in 2016. Since 2017, he has faithfully served Carlton Oaks Baptist Church, a bastion of Christian faith nestled at 9225 Carlton Oaks Boulevard in East County. At the heart of their mission lies a commitment to proclaiming the Bible as the infallible Word of God and fostering a tight-knit community devoted to mutual spiritual growth and outreach. Craig is blessed with a loving wife, Janet, with whom he shares a remarkable journey of 33 years alongside their two accomplished sons. As we gather tonight, we extend our gratitude to Pastor Craig Barnett and ask for his guidance in prayer for the United States of America, the state of California, Santee, and of course, this city council. Thank you for your service, sir. And then the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Bill Crane tonight.
First? Actually, if you don't mind, I wanted to say just one thing before I start. Don't worry, it won't be a sermon or anything. I just want to say I appreciate you all here in the city council and the city government. By the way, congratulations for those who just won reelection. And I just hope you realize the mandate you have in that, not the mandate from the voters, but the mandate from God, because he's the one who places you there. As much as the voters fill out the little bubbles, I think it's God who puts you there. That's the one you're ultimately accountable to. But I also want to say I appreciate you all, because I know it can often be a thankless job. You can't please everyone, someone's always yelling at you, dragging you through the mud. And even those who do agree with you probably don't often remember to say thank you. So I wanted to take that opportunity now to say thank you for what you all do here. And I also want to say I appreciate you because you have an important role. You're one of the three institutions established by God to restrain evil and to promote the good. That's the family, the church, and the government. And so what you do is very important. And so to the degree you define evil the way God does and restrain it, and the way you define good the way God does and seek to promote it, then we're partners. And we will always want to work with you for the common good and the thriving of our city. And I'd just like you to know that our church regularly prays for you all, and we appreciate you. So before, having said that, now let me pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we praise you and we honor your great name. You are the high king above all kings. You are high above every ruler on earth, and we give you praise and honor this night. And we ask that may your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And our Lord, we thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy in our nation. And we thank you for those who have served in our armed forces, and they've put their lives on the line to protect those freedoms. And thank you for the echo that they are of Jesus Christ, who laid down his life to free us from sin and death. And we thank you, O Lord, for the privilege that we have to participate in our own governance through elections and through meetings like this one. And even though elections are often difficult and unpleasant, help us never to take for granted the privilege it is to have a say. As important as our votes are, our Lord, we ask you to help us to remember that you are the one who establishes every human authority, and you place each person in whatever office for your own good purpose. And I pray that all those who sit in elected office at every level will recognize their accountability to you even more than to the voters. And we pray that they would seek wisdom from you, that they would define good and evil in accordance with your word, and would seek to promote the good and restrain the evil. And we thank you for each person here, for their diligent efforts, everyone on the city council and the staff of the city government and the services that are provided to the city. We thank you for their diligent efforts to make Santee such a great place to live and to work. We pray that as they consider the various decisions and policies on the agenda today, we ask that you would give all in this room a spirit of grace and willingness to listen to those who have different opinions or different perspective. And we pray that you would enable each person here to think clearly, to communicate clearly in all the matters discussed tonight. And we ask that you would grant wisdom to those making decisions, that those decisions would be the most pleasing to you and the best for the flourishing of our community and for all those who live here. We ask that you would continue to grant peace and security in our community, and that our city would be a place where people respect and care for one another, and where you are honored above all. We pray all these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
The United States of America, and the people of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, let's get on to some of the fun part of tonight. And then we have two presentations. Tonight, I'm going to have Vice Mayor Trotter and Councilmember McNellis make those presentations. They're the best dressed here. Well, sorry, you, but. You wanna go down too?
Only on days that end in Y, Mr. Mayor.
All the days that end in Y. So. You know, every year, there's this rivalry that is, there's competition for this cup. And so this year, it goes to Santana High School.
No, it actually does not. All right, is anybody here from West Hills High School tonight? Anybody from Santana? Come on up, you guys.
Sorry, guys, I only had to say that because of the rivalry between these two here.
Do you hurt in the game? Okay. Did you play in the game? No, it must have not, if you got hurt before, huh?
So these are for you, these are patches to be placed on the jerseys or jackets of the gentlemen that were able to play. They were able to play that night. And even though I am, I'm the Santana guy. And it was a rough night for me. It's always a pleasure to see all these fine athletes in the city of Santee come together, play their hearts out like it's the Super Bowl. It's fun for us to watch. I'm sure it's fun for you to play in, and it's even more fun to win, I imagine.
Yeah? So, you know, I went to West Hills High School myself, you guys. So we always have a rivalry here between Rob and I, and his kids went to Santana when they moved here to Santee. So we have a rivalry every year, so it's always a pleasure. This year, I wasn't unable to attend this year's game because we had a family emergency I had to get off, out of town for. So I would have been there. I planned on being there, but it happened just a couple of days before that game. So I have the pleasure today of handing you this trophy to take back to West Hills High School for another year. Yes, sir. Thank you, guys. You wanna say a couple of words, Coach?
After the picture.
No, we appreciate you guys. I was first graduating class of West Hills. So along with that, this is real important to us, for sure, and to me, just growing up in the community of Santee. And I remember when it was just Santana, and then when they split us and had us to go to, half of us go to West Hills and half go to Santana, and a lot of our friends were in. And the rivalry's been fun, and at the end of the day, it's just awesome to be able to come back and serve the community and coach these guys. And they're our family, and it's an honor, a privilege to be able to, that you guys allow us to, you know, play a part in these young men's lives and teach them, you know, life skills beyond football. Appreciate you all, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if everybody doesn't know, you know, this year is actually the 35th anniversary of the Mayor's Cup here in the city of Santee. And West Hills opened up in 1989, so it's the 35th year that we've had that competition.
It's gonna be a late night, can you speed along?
All right, thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Good job, fellas.
All right, so the next presentation we have the honor to do tonight is introduction of the 2024 Miss Santee, Miss Teen Santee, and our three Santee princesses. You guys wanna come on up? All right, we're just gonna go through all these here. So Miss Santee 2024, Serenity Stark. How are you? I'm really a little bit out of Serenity tonight. Serenity is a registered behavior technician and starting her Master of Arts in Special Education. She previously competed in younger Miss Santee divisions, but this was her first year competing for Miss Santee. She was born and raised in Santee, and she is only leaving, yeah, even took a complete undergraduate degree before returning home. So congratulations. We got all kinds of goodies up here for the young ladies, so we're trying to figure it all out. There you go. All right, next we have Miss Teen Santee 2024, Signe Guess. So Signe is a junior at Santana High School. She completed last year, competed last year, and took home the title this year. She was born and raised here in the city of Santee. Congratulations. Then we have our three 2024 Miss Santee princesses. The first one is Reagan Guess, I'm guessing they're sisters. That's a good guess? All right, cool. She's a freshman at Santana High School. This is her first pageant and was born and raised here in the city of Santee also. Congratulations. Yeah, exactly. Ella, hi. Hi. Ella Giver, she is a seventh grader at Hill Creek Elementary School. This is her first pageant, and she was born in San Diego, moved to Santee when she was just five months old. Congratulations. Did your mom miss Santee in the past? Yeah? Yeah, I think so, too. All right, and last, we got Riley Lovin. So she is a sixth grader at Cajon Park Elementary School. This was her first pageant and was born and raised here in the city of Santee. Congratulations, Riley. It's all a city of Santee swag for you guys, some goodies and.
Stuff.
Stuff. Rob, you wanna say something?
Actually, Lauren, will you come on up here? And do you have any of your other pageant helpers? Nope, okay. Lauren's been, Lauren's kind of taken up the mantle for running the pageant the last couple of years now? Your fourth year, oh my goodness. It really does, yeah. But you are past Miss Santee. And so what does it mean to you to be doing this for these girls now?
Well, it's incredibly special. I love mentoring these young ladies, seeing them grow through each interaction with community members, with our community leaders, and the kids in the, in the community are, they're just fabulous. And I'm so proud of them, and it takes a lot of guts to do this. I've seen a lot of girls come in, and I'm so very proud of you for sticking through and following through.
And what do we want more than anything in life? World peace. Okay, that's a bad movie, that's a good movie, actually, it's a funny movie. Give them all a big round of applause, guys.
So what happens when you use an old-fashioned camera?
She's graduating high school now.
Rob didn't need to shave before he started.
Congratulations, you guys.
Oh, my gosh. That was actually fun. Congratulations. Well, that was too much fun. I don't know if I wanna work now. You guys wanna just go home or what? Okay. All right, then, let's go to the calendar. Do we have any items to be added, deleted, or reordered? Ron?
No.
Laura?
None.
Vice Mayor?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McNellis?
No, sir.
All right, then, do I have a motion to approve the consent?
So moved?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to a non-agenda public comment. Speaker slips?
We have two speaker slips, sir.
Thank you, let's hear them.
First speaker is Carl Constantino.
Carl, welcome.
Okay. As we're all aware, there seems to be a vegetation fire in and around our riverbeds every couple of days, as our fire chief probably can attest to. I never see a cause noted afterwards, but I think we can probably all believe that they're homeless-related. That brings me to my question. Is this city council going to enact an encampment ban like other cities in the county has with enforcement before the homeless start migrating from the cities that didn't do the encampment ban to Santee and Lakeside area, but this is Santee? So that's my question. I have not seen it on an agenda in the last couple of weeks.
Here's what I'm gonna suggest, is that you come to one of our Community Policing Committee meetings, because we do address these and talk about these things. We have a very vibrant program in Santee to address the homeless. And it's just, we're not allowed to really talk a lot about something that's not on the agenda. So that's a great way to come, because we can talk a little bit more about it then, and you can hear all of, or you can probably even get hold of the captain and hear what they're doing about it. Contact the.
Mayor, could I just, I mean, we do have a ban, we actively enforce it. I'm in court regularly prosecuting people, so.
You guys been behind Walmart lately?
We, we know we need to do more, but we have all the tools, and we are using them. And I was at the regional board today, and they did a kind of summary of all the whole lower San Diego River, and we are by far the best. But that was, that was, I mean, so we still need to do a lot more, a lot more to do. But in terms of what the council's already done, what you've directed staff to do, we're way ahead of the game. We still have a ton of more work to do, no question about it. But in terms of relative to what we were allowed to do at the time and now what we're now allowed to do, we're way ahead of the game, and we're gonna keep it up, because that's the direction from this council.
Yeah, just so you know.
Didn't really get an answer. Do we have an enactment ban? Is that what you're saying?
We've had one since back in 2023.
We were the first city to do it, and so everyone's kind of catching up to us now. But we're, we can go back and look at it, but we were way ahead of the game, and that's why our numbers are so much, I wouldn't say good, right? Because it's a lot of work to do, but so much better than a lot of other cities. So we're gonna keep it up, but we have all the tools, yeah.
Yeah, you know, just since our attorney opened, opened the door for us to talk a little bit about this, what I will say is that one reason why we've had such difficulty over the years, and it's been the last five years.
Right.
Has been because of a court decision from Boise, Idaho. And we were fortunate enough to have another case come out of Grants Pass, Oregon, that went to the United States Supreme Court that overturned the lower court. So now, there's really a lot of catching up in a lot of communities to, to get out in front of this, because we were way behind, just because of that ruling. But we don't allow encampments. Actually, we have a, an employee that their only job is going out and identifying them, marking them for eviction, and then our staff and the Sheriff's Department will go out and evict them. They can keep their property with them. If they don't, we will hold it for 90 days. Once that, if they don't claim it, then it is destroyed as, you know, according to law. And we don't allow, it sounds funny, we don't allow things that will cause fires in the river area, but it's fairly hard, because what happens is folks will start their dinner, or their fire to be, you know, stay warm, and it gets out of control, and they take off before anybody's there. But we do have regular patrols in, and if we find somebody with that kind of stuff, they're cited, and that's some of the litigation, the prosecution that we're doing now is for some of those things.
So what is the timeframe between knowing that there's an encampment and going in there and clearing it out? Because the, the encampments behind Walmart have been there for months, if not longer.
Unfortunately.
It's like a little city.
Okay, I get that, that's kind of going.
And that's, by the way, posted as sensitive habitat.
I get that. So now we're kind of getting beyond where we're allowed to actually have the conversation, but I'm more than happy to talk to you about that later on and explain to you exactly how we do that. And like I say, if you come out to those meetings, you can hear what we're doing, give a lot more testimony than you're giving tonight.
Well, I was planning on it, but it got canceled.
Yeah, I know.
There's also.
Unfortunately, we had a holiday.
Yeah. The mayor and I are part of a homeless working group meeting that actually will be meeting next Tuesday.
Is that open to the public?
No, it's not. No, because that's, that's a group that meets together that's a, Marley, how many people do we have in that group now?
We have almost 40 different agencies that are involved with that to be able to get people together. In fact, we have several that are sitting right behind you. We have on our agenda tonight on our consent, if you wanted to speak to that particular item. We do have resource groups that we have, we pay for to help provide resources to those that are homeless, to help them move out of the riverbed and find other alternative housing. We partner with the County of San Diego on a $17 million grant to get people out of the riverbed. So the city has been very, very active in trying to make sure that those that are in the riverbed have a chance to get up and move out and protect, again, the life and safety of not only those that live in the riverbed, but all the properties that are surrounding us. Tonight, the last item on the agenda is, again, an emergency declaration because of the fires that we've had, to help us be able to maintain the clearance areas that we put out for defensible space in the last two to three years, so that we can keep all of those areas cleared and protect the property of individual businesses and property owners who are living around the riverbed. So we have a number of things we could speak to, but we're probably getting a little off of just the non-agenda public comment topic.
Yeah, I, and I'm looking for that, I just wanted to know, like you said, it's not on the agenda, how do we get it on the agenda? It sounds like we actually do have a ban, so probably doesn't need to be on there, but it is not well-known. And maybe it might help just to get it out there that we do have an enactment ban, and you get people like me that won't bug you about it.
Well, here's what I'm willing to do, is I'm actually, if the council will agree, take item 23, move it up to our next item, or actually our first item after consent calendar. That way, you can actually see us taking action on what you're talking about.
We need a second, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
Why can't we? Well, I think he was talking about the moving it, but with the council's direction, we can move that up. Yeah, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So just hold on, before we, before you leave, we'll take care of that.
Lee Shannon?
Congratulations, everybody. My vote is followed, yeah. How about that?
Well, at least three of us.
Well, Dustin, I had to. Okay, so I don't want to be a crabby neighbor, but Dustin told me I should let it rip. So I live on a corner of Inverness Road and Carlton Oaks, 9246. Across the street, and I have a sidewalk. We won't go into that, why I have a sidewalk. Nobody else on my street has a sidewalk, but me.
Huh? I have a sidewalk.
Did you pour?
I poured it in, yeah.
All right, well, Dustin asked, I have one, I'm on the corner. The reason I have one is because cars would zip around that corner, and there'd be people out in the street with their kids walking with a stroller. So I dealt with that. Now, across the street from me, they do not have a sidewalk. And they have moved in a 35-foot trailer. And that's not counting the tongue, I thought it was 20, Dustin says it could be 40. And at any rate, it is parked up on top of the curb, and this morning, there was that older gal going for her morning walk, and she almost got clipped by a car, because they barrel around that corner, and all of a sudden, you've got this monstrosity on the street, and it's been there for about 10 days. And I want to know what the rule is. I don't want to start a range war, but I don't think that I should have to have that. And when I go to back out of my garage, I park in my garage, I'm on a hill, and I am very nervous trying to back out, because it's in back of me. So can you, anybody help me? Is somebody gonna help?
Yes, it's 72 hours, I'm sure Councilmember Trotter already told you, it's 72 hours, but and.
But I have a question, because I talked to somebody at the city, and it's been over 72 hours, and I called. But somebody told me if it's a motorhome, they have to move it away 300 yards. But if it's a car, which this is not, they just have to roll the tires? This isn't gonna be a thing where he just has to back it up?
Correct.
You promise?
That is the rule, yes.
You promise?
Promise, that's the rule.
As far as the rule.
I promise that's the rule.
That's the rule.
That's the ordinance, yes.
Okay, and so what do I expect? Okay, and so what do I expect? Because I don't want to get into range war.
Yeah, no, it's-
I really don't, but it's dangerous.
But it is a safety thing for your concern is valid.
And you know, people, there's little kids that'll ride their bikes and their parents are with them. And the cars zip off of that street.
So Lee, obviously, this is my district, my neighborhood too, so I just-
I called you the other day.
I just got home late on Monday evening from being out of town for 11 days, so, but I haven't got back to everybody who's called me.
Oh, and I have to tell you-
But I will address this with, not only with you, but obviously with staff this evening.
That JJ back there, is he? Yeah, yeah, there he is. He's listening.
They had one that was a little tiny bit smaller. And I went across the street, really nice. Sometimes I'm nice, sometimes. And I said, hey, why don't you guys just pull it over on Carlton Oaks Boulevard, you know, pull it onto Carlton Oaks. He goes, no, it might get hit. And I go, well, I might get hit. And he goes, that's your problem. So anyway-
I got you, Lee. I will follow up tonight and make sure we address the issue.
You're a good man, Dustin.
Cut you pulled. Oh, my mic is on, ooh.
Don't tell him that, he'll believe it. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for all your testimony and stuff. We'll get this all sorted out here. Let's do the, okay, let's do 23 first. And Marlene, who's going to give that presentation? Eric, thanks. That's right, I remember now.
Look at that, Eric, you do get to home early tonight.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council. Item that's before you tonight is the maintenance of existing defensible space in the San Diego River corridor. Give you a little background on this maintenance. In October 14th of 2020, August 11th of 2021, and February 9th of 2022, all of, each of these dates, City Council proclaimed an emergency due to the risk of fire, given the extreme fire conditions the state was experiencing at the time and the possibility of future fires within the San Diego River corridor. With each emergency proclaimed, further construction of defensible space along the San Diego River corridor was authorized. With each new fiscal year, Community Services has incorporated an ongoing defensible space maintenance into the annual departmental budget and landscape contract. These are the map of the fire break or defensible space areas along the San Diego River corridor. Site number one is the west side of Carlton Hills Boulevard, which includes Mass Park Trail West. And then the, directly behind condos and the Carlton Oaks Baptist Church along Carlton Hills, Carlton Oaks Drive. And area number two, or site number two, is the Hill Creek area. And site number three there is Abraham Way, which runs along North Woodside, which is our biggest footprint for defensible space. Area four there is the Ramsgate area. Area five, or site five, is the New Frontier Mobile Homes Estate. Areas seven through nine are Mission Creek, along the trail in Mission Creek. As you can see, this is the Hill Creek area and we all remember that fateful day, Thanksgiving Day, a couple of years back when this happened. And just to keep in mind how important this maintenance is, Stephen Smith crews who were conducting the maintenance finished this fire break about 4:00 on Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving. And then the winds moved in and a homeless encampment fire down by the river produced this. So this is how important this is for us to continue this maintenance. And there it is. There's a little, you saw the before or the during the fire, and there's the after. We surveyed the site there and the house on the corner of the footprint where we finished the fire break. His avocado trees actually got singed. And that homeowner was out there the entire time with water hoses trying to fight this back. So you could imagine what would happen if we didn't have these fire breaks in place. So staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution proclaiming the immediate fire risk emergency and approve the maintenance of defensible space areas to reduce fuel and nine existing defensible space areas to safeguard life, health, or property, and authorize the city manager to enter into contracts for the emergency work and to take other actions as necessary. I'm available for questions if anybody has any.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers, Lips?
No, sir.
Okay, I know we took this way out of order, so if there's anybody who wants to speak on this, let me know. We'll get your paperwork done after the speaking. Okay, we'll go to council comments and questions.
Well, we've done this before, so I'll just make the motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
I've got, and I know we have done this before and we've talked about it several times, but Chief, you've looked at maps all over as years go by. Brush debris, all these things, you know, they grow in different directions, things happen. Are you, how often are you looking to update those maps and are using like Google Earth? What are you, what are you using to try and figure out where we need to be most diligent? Where it's these, the brush is coming up closer to houses and the like?
The areas that they've identified are city-owned parcels. So those are kind of the low-hanging fruit. Those are the easiest for us to enact these measures. We're actually working right now with planning department on a subarea plan and identifying a larger area of, that we intend to allow clearing. Will go all along the entire San Diego River corridor. Obviously, it's protected habitat, so it's not simple. But between that and our hazard mitigation grant that we plan on having somebody do all the planning for, the removal of all the hazardous fuels over the next year, we feel pretty good about identifying all the areas that need to be addressed. Now, if I had my wish, we would do it all every single year and it would have been done years ago. But obviously, it just takes a lot of, a lot of work behind the scenes, which you're all aware of.
So I, and we have, it was a couple of years ago that that was done right behind, you know, the Thanksgiving Day fire. And I, fortunately, I can't recall. I know I've been on that trail within the last six months, but I frankly, I'm on the trail and just enjoying the trail and I was not paying attention up the hill too much. How much of that debris has grown back?
It's all grown back.
It's all grown back? So is it, it is something like, I don't know that it has to be done necessarily every year to completely stop it, but is it for sure every two years that this stuff should be done?
It really depends on, it depends on-
How much rain we've had and well-
Exactly. So there's quite a few variables. But I'll say this is once you do the work and once you actually thin up and remove a tremendous amount of those hazardous fuels and then we start to remove some of the non-indigenous, really flammable things, particularly the palm trees, you know, the ongoing work will be less and less and less. Now, is there still work? Absolutely. But the heavy lift is really the first one.
Is there a price break on subsequent years?
That's what I was going to address, Councilman McNellis. There's, between the first year and this year, we're already down about $55,000 total on all of the work proposed from Stephen Smith.
What kind of a percentage is that of the overall bill?
It was about 193 the first time we did it and we're down to about 140 now.
25%.
So if we do the annual maintenance, it's, we get more bang for the buck if we do the annual maintenance.
Yeah, okay. No, that helps, that helps a lot. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Just additionally for the public's knowledge, I think that is part of the problem. The public doesn't know all the things that we do every single year that we have done, especially in the last four years. I mean, the last four years, this council has taken extraordinary measures to put things in place, like the fire ban ordinance that we have. And we're not naive too that the fires that we have on a constant basis down there are caused by the drug encampments that we have in the riverbed. It's, they're not by these homeless encampments, they are drug encampments. But it also restricts us because of these jurisdictional boundaries that we have, the things that the chief was talking about, the protected areas and stuff that we have. It's a very difficult situation that our staff continues to work with and having to try to not only navigate the things to go down there, our fire department and the public work staff, but also the things that they're restricted by the government to do. When in 2020, the county told us we couldn't go down there and clear the encampments. The governor in his wisdom this past year, all of a sudden says we can all of a sudden. So we're doing a lot of things and we have been, but we're, so just additionally, the chief, fire chief, has also gotten a $7 million grant from FEMA to go down there and clear the brush. Unfortunately, that's going to take almost three years to actually enact that money because of the state regulations that we have in the federal. It's a chief, if mistaken, please tell me if I'm wrong in any of this information. It's going to take about 18 months just to get the environmental impact done to go clear the brush out through the river of this FEMA grant that we got. $7 million would go a long, long way. And Eric, and I believe three years ago when you started this breaks, it cost us about $700,000 at that time, right, when we did the initial one? Is that?
Sam, you remember it was, we had the 190 for the landscape maintenance and then we had about a $90,000 bill from West Coast Arborist for the tree removals that we did.
Might be two different things, but we spent about $700,000 at one period going in and doing a lot of-
Well, that was in the river bottom itself. That was, I recall that.
The river bottom itself, not so much the defensible space stuff. But it's a combination of all of it there. So, you know, there's a lot of information Carl that the public, you know, like I said, doesn't get to see and doesn't get to know by not coming to the meetings and what's out there. This council is very proactive and our staff is very, understands the priorities that we put in this. Our sheriff's department is down there almost on, at least four, five days a week, right, Captain? You know, trying to get people help, trying to get, you know, offer services and all these things. And the reality is nine out of 10 of these people do not want help. There are drug encampments that they do not want help. And I've said it a few times up here and I'm not shy to say it, you know, what it is. One other area that just to bring to the public's attention is the intersection of 125 and Mission Gorge. You constantly see fires down there. That is not in the city of Santee. That is in the city of San Diego. So we are not allowed to clear those encampments out there.
But we have to put out the fires.
We have to, we have to put at the mutual aid. We have to put out the fires. We have to put the, the sheriff's department has to go there. But we are not allowed. There's a whole thing to that too, Carl, but, but, you know, we are not allowed to clear those encampments there. That is in the city of San Diego. So there's a jurisdictional boundaries that we, that we deal with around the city of Santee from Caltrans, the city of Oklahoma, the county, the city of San Diego. We have a lot of areas where we touch multiple jurisdictions and stuff, so. So for what it's worth, we wanted to share some information tonight with you guys.
And as we, just one more thing, I want to say, as we get reminded all the time, it's not illegal to be homeless. And therefore, we have certain, we have to see them doing, they have to be seen doing certain things in order for law enforcement to take any action. It's frustrating because it's obvious the things that they're doing. But hands are tied. ACLU will be here in two seconds as they've done in other communities and other cities, California especially, to protect them and sue cities for hundreds of millions of dollars. And we're doing everything we can to walk the line. We've, as our city attorney was being very humble, but he actually wrote some of the, some of the laws that we have here in Santee that were the first in the state to be enacted. And now other cities throughout the state are using our ordinances as their roadmap to deal with some of these issues themselves. But it was him and his office that came up with these things and it's been, it's been a huge help for us and our law enforcement team to help, but it's not, it's not the answer of all answers. We can't, yeah, sorry Carl, we can't go back and forth from there.
And Carl, we can talk later, but yeah, just so you know that what the councilman was saying that we really do work hard on these things. The problem is, is we don't advertise it. The city of San Diego, I don't know if you remember when they're doing their homeless encampment downtown. I mean, the drama was incredible. Just, it's like we just brought it in here, we passed it, we moved on and went on to the next subject. And Poway was the same way. They were making a big deal about when they finally did it a couple of months ago. And we'd done ours over a year ago, a year and a half ago now, not two years. Let's look at the 2021. And so, I mean, it's so long ago, we don't even, I don't even remember. But, so these things have been going on for a while. The fire chief, we have, it really upset me to see how we have to take 18 months of this and plan it and identify each tree and identify the stuff we have to do. You can't just go clear this stuff on these grants. It's terrible, put it mildly. But we're working on it. We're on top of this. It just, it may not look like it because we don't get in front of the news cameras. And that's one thing Santee doesn't do.
Well, you know, that's maybe not a bad idea. We have discussed some of these issues at our community policing committee. And so you can go to the website and bring up those community policing committees and see what's being said. You know, Marlene, there's no reason why we probably couldn't work on, put the team working on some kind of little, you know, PSA for this, public service announcement. Yeah, so, well, we're a lot more show than we are talk here. So, okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's, did we vote on that already? Okay, thank you. Let's vote.
Just waiting on you to lock your vote, sir. Motion carries unanimously.
I just got, I just got elected. I haven't even been sworn in yet, come on. You're going to pay for it.
Mayor-elect John Minto.
You're going to pay for that one, let me tell you. Okay, let me go back up to the top here. Okay, that's going to take us to item number 15, I think, right? Yes, 15. Excuse me. And thanks, counsel, for allowing us to take that out of order. 15 is continuation of the October 23, 24 City Council workshop regarding the City of Santee Development Impact Fee Nexus Study and Proposed Updates to Development Impact Fees and Continuation of a Public Hearing to Adopt the Nexus Study and the Proposed Development Impact Fee Schedule.
Mr. Mayor? I'm going to give a brief introduction and then turn it over to our finance director. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. Tonight, we're here for the second workshop discussion as part of our public hearing on the Development Impact Fee Nexus Study and the Proposed New Fee Schedule. As councils aware, Santee charges impact fees to allow for new development to assist in funding impacts created by new growth. Staff has taken to heart the questions and comments raised by the council at your last workshop. Tonight, we're here to provide answers where available from staff and our consultant and to hear additional comments and direction from the city council. Finance Director Heather Jennings will provide updated fee details and review the legislation that will mandate the city complete additional studies and reports that have not previously been required but are now by the state of California. These processes will require additional resources and time and money for the city to complete. The Nexus Study responds to provide a way to fund, pardon me, to provide a way for new development to assist in funding these requirements rather than placing the entire cost on existing city residents, businesses, and taxpayers. Council expressed concern about the comparison of the cost of developing in Santee to the cost in other communities if these new fees were adopted and requested a comparison of methods of financing new development from other communities. Staff attempted to pursue the information and found that it's nearly impossible to do so in a timely or cost-effective manner. Consultants who used to do this work no longer do so, partially because there is a vast difference in how development is financed. It may not only be apples to oranges. In this comparison, it could be apples to dining room chairs. To attempt to provide information to the council, staff has included the latest BIA fee survey of local communities in our staff report for your information. This document lists costs in various jurisdictions, but it does not provide a comparison between jurisdictions. The document also notes that the BIA strongly cautions against comparing impact fee levels by jurisdiction since methodologies, approaches, assumptions, and levels of service may vary widely. Again, staff and our consultant are here to provide any information we can and we look forward to any direction from the city council. As a reminder, the fees are not scheduled to be adopted tonight, but on the continuation of this public hearing, which is scheduled for January the 8th. So I'm going to pass it over to our Director of Finance, Ms. Jennings.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and City Council members. This is the City of Santee Development Impact Fee Workshop Number Two. We are returning tonight as requested to continue the discussion on the Comprehensive Development Impact Fee Nexus Study and the proposed updates to the City of Santee Development Impact Fees. While we had an extensive introduction and discussion of the development impact fees and the Nexus Study at the prior council meeting, I thought it would be beneficial to do a quick recap. So what are development impact fees? These are one-time charges on new development. They are used to fund the city's capital facilities, infrastructure, vehicles, vehicles and equipment that are required to serve new growth. and equipment that are required to serve new growth. And the purpose of the fee is for new development to pay its fair share of the new infrastructure required to support the growth from new development without overburdening existing taxpayers. So, why do development impact fees need to be updated? The updated analysis and methodology is necessary to comply with legal requirements of the Mitigation Fee Act, which is AB sixteen hundred, excuse me, and the new AB six oh two. Development impact fees haven't been updated for the city of Santee since two thousand five. We have significant increases in construction costs, changes in legislation, assumptions, and land, land uses since the last update. And our current fees are not adequate to support the infrastructure for future growth. So, the city of Santee has the following development impact fees. Public facilities, traffic signal, traffic mitigation, drainage, and parking lieu. Developers also pay regional transportation, regional, regional transportation congestion improvement program fee, which is the RTCIP. But this is not included in this study because it is regulated by Sandag. So, the proposed changes that were presented in the, in the Nexus Study, we have obviously some updates to existing development impact fees. We have proposed new fees. We have three new proposed fees, the fire facilities, long-range planning, and program administration. Residential fees that were previously charged per unit are now charged, or excuse me, AB six oh two recommends charging by square foot, which is the industry norm. And then finally, there's a change in the annual escalator from CPI to the industry standard, which is the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. In September, staff presented the draft Nexus Study and the updated DIPS to the Building Industry Association, which is the BIA. The BIA reviewed the draft report and had no comments or questions on the findings or the fees. So, there were some changes to the draft report that was presented on October twenty-third, the October twenty-third city council meeting. Differences between that, that draft report and the current draft report, as mentioned at the previous meeting, the report tables included, in the prior report, draft report included twenty-three, twenty-four fee amounts as the existing fees. So, these have been updated to the twenty-four, twenty-five fees and you'll see a resulting, I'm sorry, you'll see an adjustment, you'll see the adjustment and the percentage change because of the new updated fees. Impact fee fund balances were also updated to June thirty, twenty twenty-four unaudited fund balance amounts, resulting also into some adjustments in the fee calculations. There was a duplicate project listed in both traffic mitigation and traffic signal. We removed the duplicate, we removed the project from the traffic mitigation project list and this resulted in a decrease in the traffic mitigation fee. The report summary tables updated with the above revisions resulted in a slight decrease in the program administration fee because that's based on, on the actual fees. It's a two percent. So, here are the proposed development impact fees. Residential is base, is based on square, square feet. And then non-residential is, the fee is per one thousand building square foot. So, the first of the new proposed fees is the fire facilities fees. And this, this, this fee would, the purpose of this fee is to fund a portion of the construction of new fire stations, including rebuilding and replacing existing facilities and the procurement of apparatus. The fee would ensure new development mitigates their impact on fire facilities and meets the demands of growth at buildout. The proposed fee is a dollar seventy-five per square foot, which equals three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for a twenty-two hundred square foot single-family home. The chart here on the right lists the future costs associated with, with building fire, these fire facilities. The impact fee at buildout could generate a portion of the total cost approximately about twenty, twenty-one million dollars. The next proposed new fee is the long-range planning fee. This, this fee would fund new developments, fair share of updates to the general plan elements. These updates are necessary to mitigate the impacts of new development. The city is currently using grant funds and the general fund to fund these updates. Fee revenue could offset the general fund requirement and could serve as matching fund for grant awards. The fee could recover about nineteen percent of the total cost of the general plan document updates. Currently, projected cost for all the general plan and sustainable Santee updates is about four point nine million with the, the impact fee that would cover about nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand of that, of that cost. The proposed fee is eight cents per square foot. This would equate to one hundred and seventy-six dollars for a twenty-two hundred square foot single-family home. And finally, the last new fee would be the program administration fee. This is calculated at two percent of development impact fees. This would cover program administration, including additional requirements imposed by AB sixteen hundred and AB six oh two. The general fund currently pays for these costs and will bear the cost in the future if program admin is not adopted. The proposed two percent fee is below the industry standard of three to six percent and it is calculated at thirty, thirty-four cents per square foot or seven hundred and forty-eight dollars per twenty-two hundred square foot single-family home. Some of the costs associated with the admin fee would be the AB six oh two Nexus Study, which, which would need to be updated every eight years. AB fourteen eighty-three posting requirements, AB sixteen hundred annual and five-year reporting requirements, master plan updates, consultant costs, legal costs, and then staff time associated with reporting requirements, annual fee adjustments, fee collection, and fee projections. So, here is the comparison of the proposing fees to the existing. As I mentioned earlier, the existing fee has been updated with the, with the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five rate. And the fund, the most current fund balance was also included in the calculation and then we had the adjustment to the traffic mitigation fee. So, for single-family residential, in the previous report, the total change was forty-four percent over the existing. You can see it's been reduced to about thirty-six percent. For multifamily, then in the prior report, the percent change was thirty-seven percent. Now, it's thirty percent. For non-resident, non-residential commercial, the original, the original percent change between existing and proposed was fifty-nine percent and now it's thirty-nine percent. For non-resi, non-residential office, the original percentage change was one hundred and fifty-seven percent, now it's one hundred and twenty-six percent. And then for industrial, we were at thirty-two percent and now we're at nineteen percent change over existing. Marlene, Marlene touched on this. You know, we were asked, we were asked to return with a comprehensive analysis of what all cities in San Diego County charge for DIF fees. While gathering this data, it became apparent that the presentation of this data did not provide a useful comparison in which to track the reasonable, reasonableness of the city of Santee's DIF fees when compared to other agencies. These are some of the reasons why. So, each jurisdiction will have varying infrastructure needs based on age, location, configuration, size, geography, community makeup, history, and city council priorities. Cities can have different zoning and general plan requirements. Cities can have public work construction standards that are different. Is the city built out? Is there room for growth? And when were the development impact fees last updated? Through our research, we discovered that very few agencies actually have gone through the AB six oh two process or, and there are several that are going through it right now. As a result, many cities haven't recalculated or reanalyzed their fees or their requirements. So, so, we will probably see a difference in the fees in the future. In addition to agencies having different needs, they also have different mechanisms to fund, to fund infrastructure, things such as developer agreements, conditions for off-site improvements, fee or housing credits for improvements for large developments, community facilities districts or assessment districts, infrastructure grants if they're available, or other funding sources such as the general fund, gas tax, or transnet. So, next steps. So, tonight, we'd like to receive direction from the city council on the development impact fees and continue the public hearing to January eighth, twenty twenty-five. January eighth, we would like to conduct the public hearing and adopt the Comprehensive Development Impact Fee Nexus Study and Updated Development Impact Fees. And then after, sixty days after the adoption, the development impact fees would, would, would become effective. So, the recommendations tonight, continue the discussion from October twenty-third and receive direction from the city council on the development impact fees. And then also open and continue the public hearing to January eighth, twenty twenty-five to adopt the Development Impact Fee Nexus Study and Proposed Development Impact Fees. And we're available for questions. The consultant from Harrison Associate, Megan Quinn, is here for questions as well.
Thank you very much. We do not have any speaker slips tonight on this. Counsel, questions or comments?
I've, I've got a couple. On item twelve, slide twelve, if you can go back to that. So, I guess my question is, we're going to do two percent, proposed two percent fee for administrative. Why can we do it cheaper than everybody else?
I think that, I think that when we originally actually calculated, it was closer to two point five, but just to kind of stay conservative, we kept it at two. I don't know if that's, that's something, Megan, that you can kind of touch on?
Yeah, we did calculate it originally at about two point five percent, looking at the estimated.
So, we're losing money?
Estimated cost and then the projected revenues from the admin fee. But we did go down to a two percent based on the information available. Because this is a newer fee, we're estimating the cost where other agencies have been collecting an administrative fee since the Nexus Studies have been in place and they have reviewed that fee and adjusted it over time. So, the city of Santee will have the opportunity to adjust this fee over time if it is shown that it is costing more to administer.
I thought we just showed it costs more. You said two point five. Why don't we round it two point five?
Why didn't we not round it up to two point five? Well, we originally did look at it at two point five percent, but based on the data, it did look more like a two percent, I do believe, as a conservative but justifiable amount.
I heard two, I'm sorry, apologize, but I heard two point five and then we adjusted it down to two point oh.
When typically, you know, putting in a, a newer fee and, I don't know if you want to.
But everybody else is three to six. And so, I, I just don't understand how we ended up at two point oh if everybody else is, if we're supposed to be at two point five and we go to, everybody else is three to six.
We don't exactly know what, what other agencies are putting in their fees. I mean, we were, we were pretty, you know, we're, I hate to say lean, but.
So, flip a coin is what you're saying?
Well, no, I mean, it was a calc, it was a, it was a calculation and it was analyzed. It wasn't a flip of a coin, but I, I mean, we don't know what other agencies put in their, in their calculation and what they're including. We, we included things such as consultant costs, staff time, attorney costs. You know, those were, those were the main, main parts of our calculation. Oh, and then the, like, the, the, the studies, we only included two for an eight-year period. Some other agencies might be including more, but we just honestly don't have the time to do more than two every eight years.
I will also add that the city of Santee currently does their annual and five-year reporting in-house where other agencies may use consultants for that. And so, that is an additional savings in costs as well as Heather mentioned with the master plans. That's another huge cost that sometimes other agencies have more fees and they might have additional master plans that are necessary and then within their, their fees.
So, if we, we're going to realize we lose money on this, we'll be able to adjust it next year is what you're saying?
You can adjust it, yeah, in the future.
What you're saying is when we realize we've lost money on this.
If you realize.
I had mentioned, I had given you some information on traffic mitigation between office, industrial, and commercial. Did we ever get a good answer on that? Because I wasn't happy with that answer either.
Do you want to talk about the question that, that Councilmember Hall had about the traffic mitigation?
Yeah, so the traffic mitigation fee is based on the assumptions for the institution.
A key word, there's assumptions, correct?
A lot of assumptions here.
So, we're, we use trip generation rates, which is a widely used and acceptable assumption that is used for all different types of Nexus Studies for traffic mitigation fees. The ITE or Institute of Transportation Engineers is the most commonly and widely used data. We have to allocate the fee with some kind of assumption. And so, we're based traffic on trip generation rates. We did work with city staff to look at numerous different data sources. So, we looked at the Sandag information for average daily trips. That is outdated. It has not been updated in quite a long time. And then we did look at PM, peak hour trips as well as average daily trips. And the results were very similar, but the eleventh generation is the most recent data, which we want to use the most recent data. And then the average daily trips is the best used data and the most commonly and widely acceptable data to use. And so, when we're looking at, I believe you were asking about the difference between multifamily and single-family, there's going to be less trips to a multifamily residence based on traffic analysis that have been done by the ITE or any type of traffic modeling because there's less persons per household on average.
He's moving his mother into the household, so that's an extra person there. I've had family members in my household, so you can say that, oh gee, the single household's got three point two members, but now it could have six.
Well, we pulled the census data for the city of Santee and on average, for your census data for your city, there is less persons per household for multifamily than there is for single-family residents.
It's because they're older known in the house. So, again.
And then, so then, and we're looking at non-residential, sorry to interrupt. Commercial is going to have the most trips, then office, and then industrial, which is how the fee goes in that order.
Why is commercial going to have the most trips?
There's, we do reduce it because of taking out pass-by trips, any type of pass-by trips.
Number fifteen, please, slide fifteen.
Are reduced, but commercial is going to have more trips as people are going there on their way home. There's, you know, stopping by, there's going to shop, going grocery shopping. There's typically more trips going to and from commercial properties than there would be if you're just going to your office job. And then there's not a lot of additional visitors, but there are more to office than there would be to industrial because typically at an industrial site, there's just the workers and not those additional visitors.
Wouldn't they have trucks that drive out of that industrial street to, to and from that might come there every day?
Those are included within the industrial, but they're not as high as an office. Because there's a lot of, you know, warehousing and, you know, there's not as many people typically working at an industrial site if you look at the employees per square foot and how many people are going to those industrial uses compared to office or commercial.
But the, the heavier trucks leaving those industrial sites would be causing traffic mitigation and for that matter, road mitigation. And I think those need to be adjusted upwards. Go back to slide seventeen, please. I just feel that we should look at those going upwards. So, those are my thoughts.
Madam City Manager, I'm going to be a little, I'm going to be a little blunt here, so bear with me and then no disrespect to anybody here. After two weeks ago, when, when we brought this back and what, what you had said and where we are today, it feels like we are very ill-prepared to be here today for, for this. I don't know if this is because this is a priority item to get this done within this timeframe, but this is not the information that we requested, nor is it brought back to us what we, what we asked for in the last couple of weeks, opposed from, again, two weeks ago to, to where we are today. So, I do have a couple of comments, which. So I do have a couple of comments, which I will, you know, add in there. I don't know if this is more for Sandy or Aaron, so one of you guys can help me out here. What is the average square footage of a home being built in the city of Santee today? In the last year, last, give me something. I know we're basing things on 2,200 square feet, but I don't believe that's the average of the home that's being built here today. Because I can tell you what it is countywide, you know, so I've done my homework. I'm going to share with you a lot more information here right now. So the average home in the city, in the county of San Diego is 2,600 square feet that is being built today, okay? So I don't know what is in Santee, so I would like that, that information, because if we're going to make a lot of assumptions here, and that's what I keep hearing too, is we're making a lot of assumptions, we're not going off the actual data, or the data that we can actually find, apparently. So my next question is, who is the, who is the agency? Is it your agency, or is our staff that is supposed to go get all this information that we're asking for?
Can I answer on the average?
Sure.
That was actually provided by building permits hold over the last year in the city of Santee.
The 2,200?
The 2,200, yeah.
So I appreciate that, because that's what I want to know, make sure, you know, again, every community is different, too.
Yeah.
So
So that was city of Santee specific data.
Who, who was supposed to be pulling all this data that, that we asked for? Is it, is it your agency, working with the staff? Is the staff doing it? Why, why aren't we getting the information we're asking for? I guess is my question.
So Councilman, I know that you had asked for a comparison of all of the financing mechanisms and cost of doing business in each community as much as possible throughout San Diego County.
Half, half of the communities in San Diego.
Even half of those communities. In order for that to happen, we would need to hire an outside consultant to go ahead and pull those, pull that information. Because in order to pull something that is consistent and comparable across jurisdictional boundaries, you would need to look at whether or not a community project is of a certain size, a certain number, it needs a certain amount of infrastructure, if they have impact fees, if they have development agreements for different projects, if it's a part of a CFD, if it's going to be done with a reimbursement agreement on infrastructure, if it's done through an EIFD type of funding source, a grant program. There are, there are multiple sources of those. And if you would like to have that amount of analysis done, we would not be able to move forward with anything in the next couple of months. We'd have to get an outside consultant to do that, because it takes a huge amount of work. We brought this back with the BIA's analysis, and their recommendations that they, they just don't see the value of a comparison. If you still want that, we're certainly willing to do that, but we'd have to get an outside consultant. We'd have to find somebody to do that work.
So I can understand, obviously, you know, agencies and communities, you know, that use different mechanisms to do different things. I can respect that and understand that part of it. But I think what we're asking for, at least, at least the way I look at it, is I just want to know what the fees are charged. I don't want to know, how do we work deals? How do we structure this? How do we get these things billed? The straight development impact fees, and it's very, very simple. This is what the cities charge, right? So I was able to go out last two weeks, you guys, and go do my own homework and analysis, and you can check my preliminary draft, you can do whatever you want. I have eight communities here, including the county of San Diego, that I was able to pull all their fee types and have analysis for eight of them right here, on this spreadsheet right here. So if I'm able to do it, I'm not understanding why we can't get the information provided to us.
Sir, we could easily do that for you if you'd like. It sounds like you already have. But the question that you posed to staff was, what does it cost to develop? So that's a completely different question than what is a basic impact fee from one community to another. The cost to develop a project is, could be entirely different in one community than it would be, for instance, in La Mesa, they only charge two impact fees. If all we used was those two impact fees, we would not be funding most of the other things that we need here in the city of Santee.
I understand the apples for apples, like I said, I do not think everybody's, you know, what they're charging, you know, is necessarily apples for apples, absolutely, but I think it's very simple to figure out what the fee types are. You know, I think that, again, maybe I, if I was unclear two weeks ago, I apologize, I was looking for, what we're talking about is development impact fees. So what are the development impact, impact fees that the cities charge?
Do you have more than two in La Mesa?
I wasn't able to get La Mesa. I can tell you the cities that I did get, Rob. So I have the city of Santee, city of San Diego, city of San Marcos, city of Chula Vista, city of Carlsbad, city of Escondido, city of Oceanside, and the county of San Diego. I have all their fees that they charge for each one of those, and what the, obviously the total impacts fees are themselves.
And if I could, Councilmember Vice Mayor, the BIA study that's in the staff report also lists all of those fees. So that's why we provided it. It already has all those fees. Again, I'll grant you it's from 2021, but that's the most recent study that has everybody's fees listed in it. So if you'd like to see those, I mean, we can ask, go back and see if there's a CIP adjustment, or when the BIA is going to issue a new report. But we have provided the fees per se in the backup for your staff report.
Well, you just said you provided from 2021, so again, I don't think that's the most accurate information. The one I was, I was able to do is October 31 of 2024. So within the last two weeks, this is the current, you know, within the last two weeks, this is what these eight cities, or seven cities in the counties, excuse me, their fee types live here. And they all, they all vary. I mean, see, some charge different fees than different ones, and the rest of them. But again, this is all about what they charge. I think that's part of the conversation here. So, yeah. That's it. I, I, I don't know where we're here.
I, I think this unfortunately has changed for us a little bit based on some of the election results, and looking forward, and how we're going to move forward with certain projects. That does change a number of things unfortunately for us. I do have a little problem, I mean, a 36% increase in a single-family detached house, even if you're looking at 22,000 square feet, which is not the average, but if that was the average, it's still, it's still a 15,000, almost a $16,000 increase to the buyer, when it's already exceptionally difficult for a buyer to get into a home, to increase the price by another $15,500. It's, we're not, we're not moving the ball closer to the goal, we're moving it away from them. And that was, that's, that was on a single-family detached. For multifamily, it's a little bit less. And then the non-residential commercial, a 39% increase in non-residential office, 126% increase. Holy cow. How are we, how are we, 126% increase? I guess we were just, we've been that far off on our numbers for this long, and so we've now got to make up a lot of time, and then we go from here? Is it like our fire impact fee, that we've just been so far off for so long? I'm looking for heads to shake one direction or another, but nobody wants to. So, okay. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Rob, let me just share with you one thing, just, just put it in perspective what we're talking about. And I'm, I'm actually, I mean, I want to see the fees lowered personally. That's my, my personal preference, you know, is some way to do that. Obviously, I don't know if that's possible, just, it is, but I, you know, the city of Santee, the $31,098, you know, that, that's the impact fees that, that we charge to their. And so I did an average of the eight that I just talked to you about right now, and when you average them out, and they all, they all vary, it averaged out to be $31,759. That's the average of those eight, eight communities. We're right in the ballpark of the average, you know, right now.
Now, they, they being staff has said that there's a number of cities that are currently going through the same
Right.
Project that we, we have. They may find something different. Are we the first one to take that big jump in anticipation? I, I don't know. I've, obviously, I, just my background, I've got a, I've got a hard time making things more difficult for, for people to, to purchase homes, whether they be multifamily or detached, and for office buildings and commercial buildings to be built in our city. We, we want, we want, we have a whole entertainment district that we want to be able to bring people into and entice them into, and get them excited about building here. And here we are, moving, moving the goalposts 126% on office space. That's pretty significant, especially if you've, you've been looking at a project that you're thinking about doing, you've, you know, you buy a piece of land, and then all of a sudden, you, because you haven't entitled it yet, they would be subject to these fees. Am I correct? And it penciled out when you, when you bought the land, but now it's 36% more for single-family detached houses, or 126 more for non-residential office. That, that purchase may not be looking so great right now. These are, that's, it's, I'm having a hard time with this. I understand some of the necessity, especially, like I said, after the fire impact fees, we've got to, we've got to come up with a plan B now. This is, this is a difficult one for me.
I think the, the conflict here is the fact that none of us want to add any kind of fee to anybody, because, you know, we're just that, we're just that conservative. I, I think that, you know, you, you know, Vice Mayor, you have some really good questions. I think you've done some really good work, some good homework. But I, I wonder exactly if we did drill down into every single city and everything that's considered in their development impact fee, if we would see a whole different picture. They may, they may have, like, like we said, there's two in La Mesa, we'll say. Well, they may have a heavy price on that two in La Mesa, because they're trying to cover other things that they're not putting in it. We just don't have that information. Personally, I don't know if I want to spend the extra money to find that, because like you said, you know, if you add everything up, we're
I don't think we need to spend the extra money. I mean, I could, I found it in, in a matter of a couple hours, so I don't think we need to spend the extra money personally.
Well, I, I get that. But the question that I have is that, when you found that, though, did it have an exact list like what we have here, of what they're paying for in the impact fees?
Sure. Yeah.
Mayor, to talk a little bit more about that, I think the difference in where we're trying to find some sort of apples-to-apples comparison, but it can be difficult, is where La Mesa may charge two fees, that's because some of the things like, for example, traffic signal, might be required of a development to be put in place, and the developer is paying for that. So they're not paying for a fee for traffic signals where we're putting it in, and we're making it as part of our system. Instead, we're saying, okay, you're going to go pay for that traffic signal. And a lot of times, they're not aware, at least initially, right? They go through a process, just like we do, it's the same process, right? To determine what the impacts are going to be of their development, right? But it's not reliable as in, okay, you're going to get this fee, and it's going to contribute to a citywide traffic signal program where we know where they're going to be. It's directly related to that impact for that project. So it becomes this, this situation where, you know, a developer may not know going into it reliably what their fees are going to be, they're going to have to make some, you know, guesses, they'll find out as they move along, whereas here, we try and disclose them from the very beginning, so they know, okay, it's going to be whatever this number's going to be per square foot, per, per unit, and then they can build that into their performance of what they would charge and how they would cost it out.
Well, I, I think that if we went with the Building Industry Association response, is that we don't have an issue with these fees, and I think that's what it was, if I remember correctly.
No, was that, what I heard was that they didn't respond. They had no response.
So there was another assumption
So you're assuming that they said we're good with it.
Yeah.
No, they did respond.
We, we actually did a presentation to them, and I answered questions, and then we sent out the report to them. And then they said, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that they did not have any comments or any questions, additional questions, but we did a full presentation to the BIA.
They had no comments.
They had no additional comments, yeah.
Yeah, they did respond without letting us know that they did not have any, any questions or comments on the report.
They're kind of a group that
Don't like it.
Well, but they definitely will let us know they don't like it usually. So it's kind of almost a benign response. And so, because, and the way I took it was that we can agree to this, and because the impacts, and maybe it's based, who knows? Maybe one of the questions we should ask is, is it based on the fact that you go to other counties even, and those other counties really suck it too, so we're getting a really good deal here? I don't know, I'm just complete conjecture.
In some cases, you're right. I mean, you know, like I said, you look at some of these other cities, and we're well below these other cities. I mean, like, example, city of San Diego is $34,254, city of Carlsbad is $53,000 plus, city of Chula Vista is $58,000.
Right.
Their impact fees for a home. So we're way below, you know, some of those cities, but again, I'm back to an average here. We're right in the ballpark here, you know?
I would like to add that all cities will have to update their fees by 2030. So everyone will have to go through this update by 2030.
Right. I, I just, I guess where, where I'm at with that, though, is that, how many, five cities, I think it was? If you compare it in 530, five cities, you get the total, the highest and the lowest, you see what the middle is. It doesn't really mean that, because we're right in the middle, that we're going to cover the cost.
No, that's
So, so I think there should be an impact fee increase, as much as I'd rather, you know, tell my friends in the building industry that, hey, you know, we don't want to have to charge you anymore. They're used to doing cost of business, I think. And many, I mean, I go to the store just to buy groceries, and I don't want to pay anymore. And my guess is that the guy that's selling it to me doesn't want me to pay anymore, but unfortunately, his boss does, and the wholesaler does, and everybody else. So, so I think, I, I think I can support the increase, as much as I
Again, I, I go back to, I don't want to lose money. I don't mind if, if we're, you were talking, I just, you know, I, I want at least break even if we can. And that's what I was shooting for.
Laura?
It's okay, thank you. I'm just, thank you, Heather, for kicking this, well, actually, City Manager Marlene, for kicking it off. But Heather, I appreciated your report, and, you know, we're looking at a 19-year derelict, derelict, I mean, it took us 19 years to get here, I guess. So I'm just going to read what I, my thoughts, so I'm not in a back and forth. So I appreciate the efforts of both staff and the consultant in preparing this study. This marks our third review of the report, including one draft that was circulated for feedback, followed by two agenda items, which, this is the second one. Fiscal responsibility entails both cost recovery and long-term planning, and the purpose of this study is to address those aspects, aspects specifically. The findings are consistent with my expectations, and I believe our city's approach remains conservative and does not involve unnecessary cost to develop, for developers. Regarding the previous discussion on per unit versus square footage assessments, my experience in construction bidding, although very limited, has, has been based on square footage as materials are purchased and costs assessed by this measure. Additionally, homes sold, homes are sold by square foot. Deviating from the standard process would be, would, in my view, lack practical reason. Concerns about builders and home size at eight cents per square foot for long-term planning, and I think it was 34 cents for the admin fee, seem moot to me. My 1,100 square foot home, my family of four lived in, was the right size, right size and right price point for me, and, and we were able to afford that a family, as a family, and that allowed me to stop renting in Santee back in 1998 and become a homeowner. I suspect that there are a lot of first-time or workforce, workforce home buyers in the same position as I was a long time ago. Luckily, Santee can plan for all sizes and price points to fit diverse needs while still reinvesting in the things that make Santee a desirable place to live. In fact, I'd love to share an excerpt from an email I received immediately after our last council meeting. This constituent said, "I believe the focus of the diff revision should be on sustainability and fairness rather than competitive competitiveness with other cities." This appeared to be, this appeared to me to be your view. I hope I got it right. After all, Santee is the jewel of East County. Who wouldn't want to build, live, and do business here anyway? Thank you for your service." Those are my comments.
Where, where did we leave off with the ADU stuff? I didn't hear anything about that tonight.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we're not on an ADU discussion tonight for this, but we will do plan on bringing back, if the council wants to charge any of the impact fees to ADUs at your meeting of January the 8th, when you determine what your impact fees would be. But obviously, there's an opportunity for impact fees to be charged to an ADU if you decide to in the future over 750 square
I think we need to be charging I think we need to be charging impact fees on the ADUs.
Can I add on to that? Because, I mean, just, just to, because it augment what the manager just said, you, the waiver that you had is gone. So if we were to pre-processing ADUs right now, we would charge the fees. So if you want to give us direction to not charge the fees, this would be a good time to do it, or you can do it whenever. We're later on in the agenda, we have an ADU item that's just basically, we have to do it because of state law, but we, in that item, we ask, you know, do you, do you want us to address this? So we, we do need your direction on that if, you know, and if we were prepared to talk about how the fees are calculated and all those kinds of things. But, but we are looking for direction on that.
So I, I understand these being done by the dollar per square foot, but just a correction, houses are not sold by the square foot. You don't get the same house for a dollar per square foot and if it's 500 square feet more, it's the same dollar per square foot.
When I look to buy a home right now, square footage is what is listed, not, that's part of the calculation. Of course, there's a lot of things that go into it, but that is one of the calculations. How many square feet is it?
They list the square footage, but they don't sell by the square foot. We, we do have to move this forward and it's been how many years again?
19.
And hence the biggest problem is looking at these numbers after 19 years of not doing anything different. It's, we're way, way behind and it's, it, it's maddening. I've, I don't know, ever since I got elected, I've been talking about the fire impact or safety fee, what is it, the?
Fire, fire benefit fee.
Benefit fee, gosh, always the benefit fee. I've been saying, ever since we got elected, I've been saying that that's been, it's crazy that we haven't done anything about that. But, and I've always said that from moving forward, that all these things should be on some sort of an escalator so that we don't find ourselves in this situation again. I don't know if, do we, are we required and on development impact fees? Are we required to do a study before we can increase again?
Yes, I believe so, unless it's the annual escalator.
That's what I'm referring, so we don't, we can do an annual escalator moving forward. Okay, so if we want to go beyond that, if we want to go beyond that, we would, it would require a new fee study be done.
Yes.
If we wanted to go below that, does it require a fee study to be done?
I don't, I don't believe so. If you wanted to go below the suggested fee, I think that's just council.
You can set, yeah, I mean, that would be a policy decision and.
At that time.
Frankly, that's where, why you're in the position you're in now because.
Because it was never done.
Well, and it was also reduced based upon the previous study. So back, back in the day when the last one was adopted, there was.
So once again, it was Mento's fault.
Yeah, there were some.
He's the only one that's been up here 20 years.
The amount in the study was higher than the fees that were adopted. So there was a policy decision that created the gap.
I think he voted for it.
Yeah, you know, I would add to Sean's, because I was here working on that study at that time. A big reason why that was because the BIA, the BIA did not like the numbers we came out and they aggressively said, "We will not support this and we'll be against it if you go with the numbers in the study." And they were reduced significantly because of the BIA and council direction.
And this is out of curiosity, and you may not have the answer, but any idea, previous to that, how long it had been done since an impact fee had been, impact study, development impact fee study had been done prior to 19 years ago?
It was in, it was in the nineties and we added new fees at that time earlier as well, because originally when we incorporated, we didn't have a lot of these fees. Those have been added incrementally as needs have arisen, like, you know, Park and Lou or, or the facilities didn't exist. I think we enacted that in 1998. Don't quote me, but I think that was around the era when we started collecting it because we did a park master plan and the town center park master plan, we found that we wanted a community center. And that's what kind of started that discussion and that's why that fee was enacted at the count, by the council at that time.
So we haven't, we haven't done, we haven't had any escalators, we haven't done these, these fee studies in a timely manner, putting us into this situation, which is why we have such a stark, shocking difference between where it should be and where they are. And it sounds like others, we're not alone, other cities have done the same thing, but we, moving forward, I appreciate the fact that you're putting some sort of escalator in there based on our decision.
I mean, we've had escalators, we, we had a CPI escalator every year.
Oh, it was, okay.
There's an annual, yes.
It's just weird, it didn't keep up with it?
We're recommending to change the escalator because CPI is not a typical escalator used for impact fees.
You talked about that the last meeting, that some construction.
So we're using the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index, which is a much better escalator for these type of fees.
And I think that with the, with the study, there is, there is a deep dive into what the needs are and what the costs are. And I think that, that's basically what was missing over the 19 years is that, that reanalysis and, and relooking at, at what the needs are and, and costs.
And it may be too early to, to ask this, but I would like to, for, I'll get to it for a reason. I'd like to see maybe this come back before us again in two years. I want to see what's happening with inflation. I know cost of materials, cost of building, cost of everything has gone up substantially since 2020 in, at, at a rate that far supersedes all the years prior. It is, it, it was dramatic and I do believe that we're going to start to see some of that come back down in the coming years. And so if we're making these assumptions, and a lot of them, based on today's standards, today's numbers, which are inflationary at best, let, I would like to see this and I, I don't know that in the next one year it'd be, it's probably too, it's going to be too quick to make a determination, but in the next two years, I think that it'd be prudent to bring this back and take a look and make sure that, you know, we're not, we're not going, if we, if we can give somebody a break to build in the city of Santee, I want to give them a break to build in the city of Santee, but as Councilmember Hall stated, I, obviously we don't want to lose money having somebody build in the city of Santee because we do have ongoing maintenance that needs to be recovered and recouped. So I'd like to see that come back in the next two years, just to make sure we're still on task.
May I, because yes, that's great and you also have the opportunities, you know, we do an annual and a five-year report. So in addition to bringing it back in two years, you'll have, you'll have some additional check-ins, so where staff can provide that kind of feedback, which is what the point of that law is to say, you know, are you, are you on track? Are you, you know, funding what you need, but not overfunding?
Yeah.
And, and that's the kind of information that we, you know, we're required to bring you on an annual basis and we will do that. Yep.
Can we, can we go into this proposed, the fire facilities fee real quick again Heather? Because again, we're talking about all these fees, especially the new ones. I want to make sure again that we're covering and not just assuming a lot of things here that we are covering the actual costs they're going to need. So Chief, help me, if I'm not mistaken, in the, a year ago and give us one of these reports, we were roughly talking about $54 million. Now we're talking about $82 million.
You know what? Here's, we, we've had this conversation and we want to make sure that everybody understands that the fees that we're collecting are not intended to fund the entire infrastructure for fire.
Correct, yeah. And that's, but I'm, primarily I'm looking at Station 20. If you want to be blunt, again, let's, we have a real need to, to this city.
When I started doing these presentations about a year and a half ago, I, I was, I was basing it on assumptions, and I hate, sorry to use that word, that our cost of construction was going to be similar to what the industry standard was at the time, which was $1,400 a square foot. And at the time, we anticipated that Fire Station 20 would be closer to 10,000 square feet. Well, it's, it's 13,000 square feet now that we've actually spent about, we're going to spend about a million and a half dollars designing it. So now that we're 50% done through the design process and we have the true dollars for what it's going to cost, $21 million, we then went back and I reverse engineered the size of the other stations and applied that calculation of per square foot to the new station. So thus the delta, my bad, I own it, but these are more accurate numbers.
No, I, I think that's fine. So really, I mean, the question is, you know, how long is it going to take us to get that money to build that, that station, right? At, at those rates or at that, you know, proposed fee?
Yeah, and I think, I think we touched on this is that this is, this fee, this 3,850 for a 2,200 square foot, single-family unit, it would take roughly 21,000 more homes for us to get to that $81 million. And so that's essentially doubling the number of residents we have in Santee, which is about 22,000, right? So we're not going to build that many, but if hypothetically we did, then that represents the doubling of our needs and obviously represents that $81 million. So realistically though, 1,000 units represents 3.8 million dollars, only about 4.6% of that figure, 82 million dollars. And that's, again, that, that's small incremental, you know, fair share portion of the total figure.
Yeah, if I could just add, I believe it's about 20, a little over 21 million is what's estimated fee revenue at, you know, perfect build out based on the build out of the city. Because there is a fair share portion, this really is including existing and proposed development and what is new developments' fair share of these costs. And so there would be other funding sources to really get to that 81 million because we can't spread any existing deficiencies or really what is existing fair share to new development.
You know, one thing that we should also keep in mind, it's very much like that traffic light you were talking about. Either we put in the traffic light or we collect the fees to put in the traffic light. If we, if we ever get Phanita Ranch underway, they will be putting in a, you know, a fire station. And so it's the same thing. They build the fire station or give us a bunch of money to build one. Well, it's a much more cost effective for them to build a fire station and to the standards than it is for us to identify the location and build a fire station with their money. Sounds crazy, but that's kind of the way it goes. So I think we will still be able to get there and if they build a fire station, it reduces at least probably a $21 million or whatever the cost is at the time from that budget. No, why not? You're saying that would be an additional.
Additional fire station? That's not, that's not any of these fire stations. Am I right? That's additional, that's an additional fire station?
Correct. This is based upon what our existing needs are and our existing infrastructure and the replacement of that existing infrastructure.
Or building one like in my district, which is the worst response time in the city. It's, that's what.
The worst response time in the city is whoever needs it and doesn't get it.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
Just want to be a little practical on that one. So my recommendation is that send this to staff or the recommendation is staff. Support staff, thank you. Support staff recommendation, bring this back for January 8th to, for adoption. Anybody else have any other? Okay, that's what we'll do then.
Mayor, we do need a motion.
Oh, you need a motion on that?
Because we're officially.
Why move to bring this staff recommendation?
You're not voting on, you're not voting on the action, you know, the fees, you're not adopting the fees, but you are moving it because we're going to save money to continue the public hearing in this manner.
Right, okay. So the, so the motion for me is to staff recommendation to bring this back on January 8th.
Second.
To adopt the development impact nexus study and proposed development impact fees. All right, please vote.
Motion carries with four ayes. Councilmember Hall voting no.
Thanks, thank you very much, everyone. That takes us to item number 16, public hearing and introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending Santee Municipal Code Title 13 zoning regarding accessory structures in front yards. And Sandy, I think you're going to do that one right? Oh, Christine, sorry. I didn't even see you walk up there. You walk so quietly.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This item is to amend Title 13 to allow accessory structures in the front yard and exterior side yards. In September 2023, a city council workshop was held and staff solicited input on potential changes to the Santee Municipal Code to allow accessory structures in the front yard. City council directed staff to conduct additional research and return with potential changes. In May of 2024, a second workshop was held and staff presented potential development standards and city council directed staff to revise those proposed development standards. This is a summary of items that city council directed staff to address and I will discuss, discuss each one in this presentation. So those, these items include the type of accessory structures, locations, setbacks, size, height, distance between structures, anchoring requirements and materials. The proposed definition for front yard accessory structure would be defined as a subordinate, non-habitable, open detached or attached structure within the front yard or exterior side yard. Front yard residential accessory structures would include, but not be limited to covered patios, carports, pergolas, arbers and similar ornamental structures not used for storage. Currently, structures are prohibited in the front yard. The typical front yard setback requirement is 20 feet to the property line. The proposed setback requirement for accessory structures such as patio covers would be 10 feet to the property line. And the proposed front yard setback for carports over existing driveways would be five feet to the front property line. I also want to add that, that vehicles are prohibited to be parked on unpaved surfaces such as lawns or dirt surfaces. The image on the right shows examples of where structures could be located in the front yard. A minimum building separation of five feet is also proposed between accessory structures. These are examples of attached and detached structures that would be allowed. The current exterior side yard setback requirement is 10 feet and the proposed exterior side yard setback would be reduced to five feet. The proposed maximum size for a front yard accessory structure would be 170 square feet and a maximum of two front yard accessory structures are proposed for a total of 340 square feet. The proposed maximum height is 16 feet or the roof line of the single-story residence, whichever is lower.
Can you go back one slide there? Is, is it the top of the pitch of the roof line? Because in this picture right here, you've got a roof line that, that steeples down.
It would be to the, the highest point.
The highest pitch, yeah, okay. Yeah, all right, thank you.
Structures would be required to be adequately anchored and bolted. Weighted anchoring would not be permitted as shown in this slide. Structures would be required to be well-maintained. Any torn, bent or dilapidated structure shall be replaced or removed.
All right, I'm going to jump in right there again. Go back one. Because I do see a lot of these around town and, and yes, oftentimes they are torn apart. Are we, so are we going to send them a letter? Knock on the door, what are, what are we doing?
It's really based on complaints.
Fair enough, but if you, we do have a complaint, we send them a letter?
The code enforcement officer, I think first contacts like goes to their house and talks to them in person.
That's right.
And then this verbal first.
Want to make sure that the point we get across is, it is permitted, that you can do that, but it's, it's got to be, it's got to be in working order.
That's correct. That's what, that's what the code compliance officer would say.
Okay, so not that, no, you've got to just rip that out and then leave.
Correct. It would just say, and that's why we're trying to provide the clarification in the municipal code, that this would be allowed without a building permit, but you have to maintain it.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
It's compliance, not punishment.
The current requirement for paved areas in the front yard shall not exceed 50% and the proposed, proposed requirement. And the proposed, proposed requirement would exempt front yard accessory structures from the 50% paving limit. Oh, okay, sorry. So the current requirement is that paved areas shall not exceed 50% of the required front yard area. And if someone wants to have two accessory structures, they would be exempt from this 50% paving limit.
What is the paving limit, then? Is there none?
No.
So there would be no paving limit, so they can have concrete underneath, their whole front yard is concrete?
Oh, no, no, no. So the maximum would be, if they had two structures, it would be 340 square feet. So 170 square feet for each structure.
The cement under the, that structure would not count. So if you, if you already have 50% paved, you could still put in those two structures with concrete underneath?
With an additional 340 square feet?
Yeah, well, but, but under those-
Fair enough, but if you, your driveway is non-permeable. So you've got a full driveway, but no, no structure over the driveway?
Right.
And you're using your whole front yard?
That's, that's, I mean, the way it's proposed right now, it's, you know, 50% is a limit, but you can, you can do the additional 340 if you have those structures, yeah.
Yeah. All right, so it could, I mean theoretically, it could take somebody's-
Could be a fair share of the front yard.
Yeah.
Or all of it. All right, fair enough. That's what I want to hear. Thank you.
Okay, so now I'm going to talk a little bit about temporary accessory structures. The proposed definition for a temporary, temporary accessory structure would be defined as shade only without any foundation, footing, or anchoring. And temporary accessory structures shall be well maintained. And again, any torn, bent, or dilapidated structure shall be replaced or removed. Staff recommends that city council open, conduct, and close the public hearing on the ordinance amending Title 13, introduce and conduct the first reading of the ordinance and set and conduct the second reading for December 11th, 2024. And that concludes staff's presentation.
All right, there are no speaker slips and, and Rob, you already asked, I think, all your questions.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second? I have a second by Councilmember Covall. Please vote.
May I, Mr. Mayor, have comments?
Oh. You can't speak up, so.
I put the little box thingy in the queue.
Okay, one time in two years? Go ahead.
First, I want to commend you guys because I know this has been, been a year. You know, we've been dealing with this and you guys have listened to a lot of what our feedback was and then really, you know, put this guy's, oh, thank you for doing such a good job. I just want to ask two questions to make sure it's very, very clear to everybody. I actually pretty much, the summary is, is very well here on the third slide. But on those shade structures there, seen it on the one with the moat, with the RV in the center, slide 13 there? So this appears to me is that the property line is somewhere in those shrubs there, right? And what we talked about is not having anything in five feet within that, that property line there is what you're proposing here.
So this, so the difference between a temporary accessory structure and a permanent accessory structure is that the temporary, it's just the sail shade cover. Whereas the permanent accessory structure is actual frame and it's bolted to the ground. And so that is what would require the five foot setback requirement, but not the shade sail example.
Okay, so I guess why, I'm trying to understand why is that? Because obviously we have poles that are, that are in cement, I'm saying.
So the, the post that you, it's, it's similar to like when someone puts up a fence. It's just the post, right? And so we don't consider that a structure? So the, just the difference here is the sail attached to the post.
And this is, yeah, under the temporary, so that should be coming down when they're finished?
Or when the sail is toast, then it's, you'll have to replace one.
You're changing it out.
Yeah. I, go ahead.
This is still really one of my biggest things about, about this still is that, you know, in Santee, everybody has a, a lot of people, because everybody has, has a trailer to go to the desert or to the river or motor home and all these things. And we're, we're, we're basically telling them they cannot park their vehicle covered on, within five, you know, on the side of their yard. And that's, that's really, you guys have done a great job listening to everything we, honestly. And that's my biggest combination I'm having here still is that we're telling the citizens that they cannot park their RV or their boat or any other trailer on the side of the yard and have it covered.
Christina, can you go to slide seven? I believe that's the slide you're probably looking for.
So this slides-
Not really the best example, just because, I mean, it's a corner. This is a corner lot and that's what you're trying to depict here with the, with the, the corner setback. I'm referring more to the right-hand side of the, the house, if you would, would look at that.
The interior?
Yeah, the interior side of it.
So, well, they can't, they can park the vehicle in the side yard. They just can't have a permanent, they can't have a permanent structure.
Temporary only.
Yeah, just temporarily.
That's honestly the only combination I'm having. The rest, everything else, I think we, we've hammered this thing and got this thing here. I just, I have a hard time telling the citizens of Santee that they can't cover their, their RV or their, their asset.
If I recall correctly, in the last one, Chief, wasn't it, what, this was a fire thing? I thought that was the issue for the, a structure within five feet of the property line. I thought that's what you brought up.
It's a building code, not a, not a-
Was it a building? Okay, maybe it was-
It's a building code issue, not a-
Yeah, I believe, I believe that's more of a building code concern.
Yeah. I, I'm telling you, I think this is honestly, this is one of the best comebacks that I've seen here in a, in a while. You guys knocked it out of the park with this, really, truly. You, I think you've really listened to everything we said last time and did a fantastic job and made this look exactly like I was hoping it would come back as. I was a little concerned when I saw this coming up. I was like, oh, darn it. You guys did a great job. I understand the council-
Is a, is a steel structure non-combustible? Is a, a carport, I don't want to call the darn things right now, but is that non-combustible, Aaron? Is that, I mean, is it?
Everything's combustible.
The building codes are, are pretty clear. They're just trying to create separation on a property line between two people. So if you do have a fire under a built structure, shade cloth is going to disappear pretty quick. Whereas a built structure, it's going to spread to your neighbors. And for instance, Shaggy Bark is just not too long ago, it did the exact same thing. It was built to the property line, it, fire underneath there, went to the neighbor, took down his fence, took it down his shed and broke some windows in his house. Had that structure not been there or at least five feet away so that heat and smoke could go up, it may or may not have happened, but I presume it would have been less damage at least. So we're kind of stuck when people come in to get their permits or if we, if we exempt the permits, adjust our, our code on what's exempt, then we'll, you know, be able to tell them, hey, you know, here's the five foot rule. If you want to get within five feet, which you can, you have to build a firewall right up to that property line or within the five feet. There's a fire rated wall that's going to protect you with a parapet. And that would be a setback requirement, you know, more than a building code. Building code is going to go, well, I need a firewall, no openings, and it'll be one hour. Kind of, kind of wrap it up there to help with that, that conversation, I think.
You know, I understand what you're saying. For me, though, I think there's a lot of covers out there that you can put on a lot of these vehicles that don't. I mean, this, this is convenient because if, you know, every six months you want to walk out there and go in the trailer to get something, well, it makes it easy, but if you put an actual cover over it, it's not as easy to go into, you know, every six months. Because most people only, you know, start doing things with their trailer right before they go on a vacation or use of it. And, you know, that's why a lot of people just park them. And, you know, they only use them every, however. So I, I, me personally, yeah.
Um, can I add one more thing? I don't know if this will help you, but accessory structures, like in, in the back, let's say, for example, in the back of this home in the backyard, it will always require a minimum five foot setback to the rear as well. So it's, it's a standard, it's our current requirement now even for accessory structures that are in the backyard.
Anything else?
No, oh.
Okay, please vote.
And I didn't know that. Now I'm changing my mind.
Yeah, I did.
I'm joking, actually. You guys did a great job. Thank you so very much. And I, I understand your point, Vice Mayor.
It was a amazing job, you guys. I know they did.
I think they did a great job.
Motion carries with four ayes votes. Councilmember Trotter voting no.
All right, takes us to item 17, Public Hearing and Introduction and First Reading of An Ordnance Amending Santee Municipal Ordinance or Code, I'm sorry, Title 13, zoning regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units to comply with recent changes in state law and finding the action to be statutorily exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under section 21080.17 of the Public Resources Code.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. The purpose of this public hearing and first reading is to amend and restate Santee Municipal Code Section 1310045, which is your accessory dwelling unit, unit ordinance. And the purpose of the hearing is to comply, bring that ordinance into compliance with two new laws that were signed into law by the governor in September. They are Assembly Bill 2533 and Senate Bill 1211. Both of them amend the state accessory dwelling unit law and both take effect January 1st of 2025. The ordinance that we have presented will make sure that our ordinance complies with both of those new laws so that it can continue to be enforceable after the first of the year. As was noted earlier this evening, this agenda item is not intended to address whether ADUs that are approved under this ordinance will be subject to the mitigation act fees. However, as, as the county, the city attorney said, we are willing to take direction at any time. Otherwise, we were planning to just trail along to your other conversation about the DIF fees and see what you wanted to do from there. But anytime you are ready, we can bring that back to you. So briefly-
I, I'm sorry, can I just, but, but the status quo, as you sit here today, is you would pay. So just, just to be clear, just to make sure that that's clear. Your, your waiver is expired. If you wish to extend the waiver or re-adopt the waiver, you need to tell us. But otherwise, we would charge current mitigation fees against ADUs.
So no action would be needed unless we-
Correct. That's right. That's exactly right.
And if I may just tag on for, for full clarity, no matter what, ADUs under 750 square feet will not have a development impact fee. That's in accordance with state law. It will only be, if you wanted to, well, currently, any ADU brought to you that is 750 square feet or larger would incur a development impact fee as things currently are now based on a calculation of the proportionate share of the entire square footage of the ADU to the square footage of the single family dwelling.
Ron, did you have a question?
Well, I was totally confused with, I think what we want to do is we just want to approve it then, right? You kind of confused me right when you did that.
I think what you're saying is since it's state law, we're coming into compliance.
Yeah, that's why I was.
We just have to. So what you're saying is you're making a motion to approve?
Yes.
You don't want me to go into all the details?
And I was all set to do that until he made me.
Well, I just want to be clear because the way that, that was phrased, it implies that we're not charged. But your ordinance, you, if someone applied for an ADU and got a permit for an ADU, they would be charged the fees right now if it's over 750.
All right, so I do have a motion and a second. Did you catch the motion and a second on that, James? Thank you. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Good job.
Thank you. That worked so well, I'll stay for one more.
All right, then, that takes us to item number 18, which is a public hearing and introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending Table 13.12.030A and Table 13.14.030A of the Santee Municipal Code Title 13, zoning regarding commercial office and industrial use regulations applicable to car wash facilities. Go ahead.
Good evening again, everyone. I will quickly jump to the slide that, if I can get there. There we go. This is a follow-up item to council's prior consideration of a moratorium on new car wash facilities in the city. We've taken your direction and brought back to you augmented review standards for car wash facilities in all of your zoning districts. What this has required is change, only two changes, to the light industrial and general industrial districts. Currently, they are permitted as a use by right. With this change to your ordinance, those, car washes in those districts would be subject to a conditional use permit review. Car wash facilities will continue to be prohibited in the office professional district zone. And the commercial, the general commercial district also will not change. That will continue to be a conditional use permit. But the final change is that we would augment the review standard in the neighborhood commercial district from a minor conditional use permit to a conditional use permit review. This is a map showing each of these various zones. Just to cut to the chase, the darker turquoise, I believe, is the office professional district. That is the only place, in addition, in addition to the large yellow residential areas where car washes would be prohibited. Every place else, they would be subject to a conditional use permit. And with that, the recommendation is to open, conduct, and close the public hearing on the ordinance amending the applicable tables, introduce and conduct this first reading of the ordinance and set and conduct the second reading of the ordinance on December 11th, 2024.
Thank you. There are no speaker slips. Do I have any questions or comments from the council? Do I have a motion to approve then?
Is it a motion to approve or just to bring it back for a second reading or?
It's just staff recommendation.
Okay.
Is there a second? Okay, I'll second that then. Please vote. Another good job.
Thank you very much.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to item number 19, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA. Expenditure Plan Final Update and Resolution Authorizing the Transfer of ARPA Funds to the General Fund to Fund a Portion of the Fiscal Year 2024-25. San Diego Sheriff Contract, you guys are costing us more and more every year. Authorizing the city manager to make, it doesn't actually say that in here, ad-libbing a little bit. Make all as needed final ARPA allocations on December 31st, 2024. Heather?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Councilmembers. This is our final expenditure plan update for ARPA. So, excuse me, in accordance with the final rule, ARPA funds need to be committed or spent by the end of this calendar year, 12/31/2024. Those funds committed or encumbered by 12/31/2024 have a spending deadline of 12/31/2026. So our ARPA allocation was $7,325,525, and we were fortunate in that we were able to classify it as lost public sector revenue replacement, which gave us a lot of discretion on, on how the funds could be spent and allocated. I wanted to show you guys how we have spent. We've spent about, or allocated about 6.9 million of the 7.3 in this chart right here. You can see we've done a, we've done a lot of, of projects, touched a lot of parts of city operations. There is a small amount left that needs to be allocated, and this is about $425,000. The proposed final recommendation is to allocate it to the Town Center Specific Plan Implementation, which we'll touch on in- which we'll touch on in, in some later slides. So overall, cap, the capital improvement program, we allocated about five point nine million dollars to, from ARPA to the capital improvement program. You can see all of the, all of the projects that we were able to fund. Many of these are complete. There are a couple that are still not complete, but these, if you remember, we did that expenditure or funding swap at mid-year where we moved the ARPA funds, the, our funding for projects that we knew we weren't going to be able to get started, we moved those over to the general fund as a funding source. Other project, there should be one more slide behind. Is there another? There we go. Homelessness, we allocated about six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to homelessness. This includes the two contracts that were approved earlier this evening for the East County Transitional Living Center and Path. So we were able to do, you know, quite a bit with, for homelessness. Other projects, three, about three hundred and forty-two thousand. This includes Fire Station Five improvements, support to nonprofits, support to Bruise and Bites, and the Empower East County Business Fund Project. So as I mentioned, we have about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars left to allocate. The recommendation is for future Town Center Specific Plan Implementation. This could include public infrastructure, example, like thematic lighting, small business assistance, art program assistance, entertainment opportunities, or even matching funds for infrastructure projects. What we would do is we would move the ARPA funds into the general fund and set those funds aside and bring them to City Council for appropriation once a suitable project is identified. So the recommendation is to adopt the final ARPA expenditure plan, reflecting any adjustments as directed by the City Council, and allow the city manager to adjust funding allocations as needed, consistent with the City Council's stated priorities, including any final allocations on December thirty-first, 2024, as needed to utilize all ARPA funding.
Thank you. We don't have any speaker slips. Council, any questions or comments?
Fire Chief, do, do we have all the funding we need for interim station or any other outstanding fire stuff for that interim station? Yes.
Likely no. We're waiting on the final proposal from the, from the contractor. But preliminary discussions, we're likely, do not have enough funds encumbered for that entire project.
Okay. Do you, any, have any idea, an assumption here? We're doing a lot of assumptions tonight, so what the?
Assume I could use four hundred and twenty-four thousand dol, no, I'm just joking. That's, that's not how much, but I, my guess is that we will need several hundred thousand dollars more.
Are we able to use any of that four hundred and twenty-four thousand towards that if we wanted to? So I'm making a motion to approve with that we use the money for the interim station first and then the Town Center Specific Plan, whatever, I'm sorry, whatever the rest of that, Town Center Specific Plan Implementation was.
Sean, does that going to cause the same problems?
No. And second.
Okay. Council comments? All right, then. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. It takes us to item number twenty, which is New Business Presentation of Proposal for City Holiday Closure in December 2024. And even though that's a recommendation for 2024, is that something that would go on be, beyond, like for next year and thereafter?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to speak to that. This is, this is a pilot proposal for you. It's a philosophical decision on the part of the council. We just wanted to present it for your consideration. The item before you is a potential employee benefit that could be provided at no cost to the city and involves the potential of closing the city's main offices over the Christmas, New Year's timeframe. Ten cities in the county operate in this format, and staff in Santee have been interested in it for several years. I will tell you that until now, I did not want to bring this forward. I didn't believe that Santee would be able to provide the level of service that our community expected because we did not have enough online technology to be able to make that happen. That's changed in the last year or so. As you know, we have intergov now, we have an updated website, we have an app, we have other ways for the community to reach us, and we would have social media monitoring during this timeframe as well to allow us to make sure that we're providing positive customer service. Any necessary tasks for city operations would still be able to be performed with that assistance and with staff working as necessary per direction of their department heads. We've been able to review a number of different ways that city operations could function. We wanted to be able to bring this forward for City Council consideration. While the main offices would be closed, public safety, other departments such as our duty person with PSD, our person with CSD that goes out and makes sure that people's reservations are taken care of in the parks or tournaments are handled appropriately would still be working. We would still have any necessary staff to keep city operations moving forward. Again, my comfort level with staff on this one is that if, if a person calls in or sends in a notice to the city and says, my water heater broke and I need a permit to fix it, no one is going to say, oh, great, we'll see you in a week and a half. That's not what's going to happen. We don't want to do that. We want to make sure that we're monitoring those kinds of requests to make sure that we're still on top of keeping the city safe and our residents being able to enjoy their holiday season. We've provided a number of different options for council consideration tonight. I'm going to allow Rita from our Human Resources Department has put this together, and I'd like for her to be able to make the presentation. And we're here to gather council's opinions on this item tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you go on, I had a quick question about permitting, I mean inspections. Thank you.
I knew where you were going.
Um, a water heater, for instance, isn't that, if it's installed by professionals, self-inspected by the professional, the only time we do an inspection is if it's not, if it's homeowner-do-it-yourself kind of installation?
The code allows for any kind of emergency, like a water heater, water line break, air conditioning that's necessary to be repaired, and a permit followed up as soon as possible and an inspection followed up as soon as possible.
Okay. That's what I was thinking, and so I didn't think it would really have any real direct impact on this.
We do sit and call, you know, but Doug and I would be available when, what does happen is sometime we have a gas line emergency to get gas service re-accepted. So they'll usually call us out for that, and I'll get a notice, hey, we need to take care of that, and we'll, we'll do that and, and come in and take care of that for the citizens.
Thanks, Aaron. All right, go ahead. Sorry for the interruption.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. So this is the presentation on the proposed holiday closure. So I started off with a San Diego County survey that we did this month. So these are the cities that currently have holiday closures between Christmas Eve and New Year's Day. So there are ten cities that currently have this holiday closure. And there are eight cities, including Santee, that do not have this holiday closure between this timeframe. So as far as compensation during the holiday closures for the ten cities, currently, two cities, Imperial Beach and Solana Beach, are one hundred percent city-paid. Six cities are doing one hundred percent employee-paid. So in other words, the employees use their accrued leave balances. One city, which is La Mesa, are doing a fifty-fifty split between the city and employees, and that's what the City of Santee's proposal is tonight. And one other city, which is Lemon Grove, what they do is they, any holidays that fall on a Friday, Saturday, Saturday or Sunday throughout the year, that get applied to the holiday closure dates. So continuing at the City of Santee proposal for the holiday closure, so how it would work is City Hall and the Public Services Yard would be closed for the workdays between Christmas Eve and the New Year's Day holiday. It's typically four days, but in 2024, it's five days. So I have this little calendar here where you could see the five days are X-ed out. The three blue days are the observed city holidays, which are Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and New Year's Day. So again, the proposal would be the fifty-fifty split between the city and the employees for the proposed closed five days. So they would use their own accrued leave balances. So it would be their vacation for managers. They could use their administrative leave, or they could use compensatory time off. They would not be able to use sick leave. So for employees on the nine-eighty schedule, it would be a total for the five days of forty-four hour leave total. For the fifty-fifty split, it would be twenty-two hours for the city, twenty-two hours for the employees. For people on the nine-eighty B schedule, it would be thirty-six hours. Again, eighteen hours for the city and eighteen hours for the employees. And people on a regular forty-hour work week, it would be a twenty hours for the city and twenty hours for the employee. To put it into dollars.
The, the presentation, as it moves forward, Councilmember, the cost to the city is the same because the, the employees are, are being paid either salary or holiday pay or they're being paid for their vacation. So that's why we're bringing it forward to you because there is no additional cost to the city to make this work. It's a philosophical call on the part of the council, and we're just looking to give you options and take your direction.
So for this proposal, the eligible employees would be all regular full-time and regular part-time benefited miscellaneous or non-safety employees and safety management employees that work at fire administration and City Hall. So this would not include shift fire battalion chiefs. The fiscal impact, which is what City Manager Best just mentioned, there's no direct cash-based fiscal impact. The total dollar amount paid to staff would be the same as if staff was working or using paid time off, using their accrued leave. So certain employees would be required to work because there are critical business operations that were, would be needed. So department directors would be, would identify who would be required to work, such as someone in payroll, public services, or certain people that would be required to be on standby duty to either empty trash cans or clean restrooms during that timeframe when we would be closed, or there might be park reservation staff that might need to work. So that would be decided ahead of time before the closures. And those required to work will receive the same benefit of the holiday closure and would be made whole. So this is just a big, bigger picture of that calendar because the one I did earlier was a smaller snapshot. You could see that the holidays are right in the middle of the week. That's why we're, we're looking at the Monday to be closed just because there's that disruption with the, the two holidays and then close Thursday, Friday. That's why we were looking at that. And looking ahead, if you, we were looking at doing this further as a continuous thing instead of just maybe 2024. This is 2025. You could see, oops, I'm sorry. Yeah. It, it just usually falls in line where it's just, it's, it doesn't fall in the middle like it does in 2024.
Well, the most important day having off there is the first of January.
Oh, sorry, yeah. I'm sorry, what did you say, Mayor?
The most important day having off is January first.
That's true.
For obvious reasons.
So this is 2026. So it usually is four days. It's not typically five days like it is in 2025, 2024. In 2027, it is four days in a row. Again, like City Manager Best mentioned, we have intergov. It's a self-supporting option for, for the citizens. So on January second, Thursday, we'd come back and resume in-person customer service. Some employee benefits for the proposed holiday closure. There would be work-life balance for employees. They can travel or enjoy staycation, reduce daycare headaches for parents of school-aged kids on winter break, avoid employee tension by eliminating competing time off requests. So staff recommendation is to, that the council consider this proposal. There's possible options to consider. A hundred percent employee-paid, so use of employee-acquired leave banks instead of the fifty-fifty split. Or you can consider the fifty-fifty split between the city and the city and the employees. You can consider only foreclosure days for 2024 instead of the five. We can do a trial run to just do it for 2024 to just see how it works. Or you could decide not to do it at all. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We do not have any speaker slips. You know, I want to speak on this. When I worked for the city of San Diego, we had, we didn't get the whole week off, but we always got a couple of days off. And that's to spend with, you know, family and, and even though there wasn't any written rules about it, generally, everybody went home a little bit early on that, the day before the Thanksgiving or Christmas and whatnot. And, and it did make a big difference for all of us. And, you know, there's countries, other countries that give you thirty days off during the holidays. And fortunately, they pay for that, so, but I don't think we should do that. I like the fifty-fifty split. I think giving employees the time off to be with their families is quite essential. And I'm very much in favor of this, so.
Can they, so if we, if we were to go forward with this on the fifty-fifty split, they could, I'm assuming they can use their accrued time or to offset the, offset the fifty percent? It just doesn't take away all of their vacation time?
Correct.
Okay. Can you go back to the options again?
I'm sorry, go back to.
Can you go back to another slide?
Sure.
And so you said it's staff recommendation that the council approves this proposal, really?
Well, just consider it.
I think we're doing that.
That's really weird.
I think we're doing that.
Staff recommend, recommends that we do this? That's really crazy. Can't imagine that. I, I am in favor, as the mayor stated as well, the fifty-fifty split and a lot, of course, allowing them to use their time off, accrued time, whatever, to do that. But I also, I want to see that as a trial run. I, I want to, just for one year, see how that works out. As soon as you brought this up, I immediately was concerned with what if, you know, somebody drops a bunch of garbage in the middle of the street, you know? How do they get, how do we get a hole of public works? You know, who's running payroll? Because I'm sure staff still is going to want to get paid, and they want to get paid on time. And how far does that put you behind, Heather? And, you know, obviously, you're going to have to prepare for that and figure that out. I don't know what stress that puts on your team, but, you know.
Regarding the comment about public works, Councilmember, duty is still on call. So if any issues arise in the city, the appropriate measures will be taken to reach out to you. It's either City Manager, myself, or the Public Works Director to make sure those things are resolved in a pretty quick fashion.
Okay. Heather?
And regarding payroll, we typically have to work over the holidays anyways to get payroll out. So we're used to it.
All right. I'm, I'm sorry that that has to happen, but you know what? The rest of the team loves you.
I appreciate that.
You should get really good Christmas presents.
I should.
So, yeah, I.
Well, I mean, I, I work for Thrifty Drugs, so I mean, I, I have six days a week. That was my Christmas. And we were Christmas and New Year's, but I'm okay with a fifty-fifty. I do want to do the trial run, though, so.
All right.
Yeah, I, I, my experience, well, I've worked for a public agency where we had a little more time off at the holiday than, well, one extra day than you guys have right here because that's easier to communicate to the customers. And I just have always worked in a department that is customer-facing. So I know in this kind of scenario where, especially where it's a fifty-fifty split, that there's definitely not no cost. There's, there's cost because some people will be working because they have to. And even if the doors are closed to the public, there will be people that will have to work. And some people will get the benefit of basically extra vacation time, which is a benefit and is a cost. And it, it always tends to fall in the same categories of people who get and don't get, in my experience. Major League Baseball, which I worked in for twenty-five years. If you think about how long a baseball season is, you're, you're gearing up for opening day. If you think about how long a baseball season is, you're gearing up for opening day. You're doing spring training in February. And then, you know, if you're lucky enough to make it to the postseason, you're playing into October. And so really, across Major League Baseball, the only time that we could all take time off and not compete with each other was shut down for the holidays. So I do like, but that's a different scenario. I mean, I could never, you know, take vacation during the season. And so I know there's different departments that probably have that kind of, different kind of responsibility. So if you're saying, I thought I heard someone say, well, you could make up the people that don't get to take the time off. They would take time off somewhere else. Does that mean like in June or something, they would get extra vacation days?
That we would credit them the hours.
So it is a cost. So I personally, if you could go back to the slide that shows whatever all the other cities are doing and how that's, how that cost is divided.
I just have a list of the cities that are doing it. I don't have how they, I have, I know what they do, but I just have a list of the cities.
Well, I guess the only, we would be like La Mesa and then all the other cities. I don't mean the, I'm okay, I guess where I'm coming from is I'm okay with being closed between Christmas and New Year's. I think some people would choose to work because that's a great opportunity to do, get caught up on stuff. You know, I would sometimes come in if I didn't have to work with customers and I could go to my desk and do desk work and get caught up on emails and things like that.
Slide three.
Like, so that's up to the employee, but, okay. So similar to what Del Mar, Alcoa, San Marcos, Encinitas, National City, and Vista does. I mean, they are closed during that time, but the employees use their vacation time. And then that becomes more of a department decision because it's more balanced in that way. The 50/50 split, we're adding vacation time. And I know that some staff have the benefit of every other Friday off where other staff or department don't have that benefit. So for me, I'm not comfortable with the 50/50 split. I'm more comfortable with closing during that time and then employees use their accrued time.
I have a question about that, then. So if we're closed during that time and they have to use their accrued time, but they have no accrued time left, they just don't get paid, or?
No, they would come to work and do work without customer-facing work, but there's always work.
So we would, what we're proposing, we've developed some proposed guidelines. We would be closed to the public other than the required workers. We would not allow people to work. And if some people did not have any leave, like there might be brand-new employees that don't have enough leave, we would advance them leave. And so as they start accruing leave, finance would, I forgot what you call it, negative, what is the? Yeah.
Yes, deducted, yes.
So we would advance the leave to those employees that don't have enough leave so they would not get a paycheck.
But why would you not, what if someone wanted to work during that time? I think, I mean, for someone who's always worked in public-facing, it was just nice for me to come in the office with no one coming into the office, except for my coworkers. So why would you prohibit it?
Councilwoman, I think the original proposal that we've presented is to not have employees choose whether they're going to come in or not. I mean, if that's going to be the situation, we're kind of doing that now, except somebody has to be there. So the department heads have to choose, you want to be off and you want to be off, but I need somebody here, so you get to go. If your choice is you get to leave and the other person has to work anyway, then...
But if you're close to the public...
It's a little challenging.
Yeah, if you're close to the public, doesn't that take that part away from the department head? I mean, I feel like it's that way. You could make a policy that there's no meetings during that week. You could make a policy. Like, we've done things like that, too. You're not going to have interdepartmental meetings because then that requires, you know. It really truly is, you can do work that you need to get caught up on. You can, you know, your desk and whatever parameters around that that need to get work. If you want to come in and work, fine. If you want to take vacation time, because a lot of people, let's be honest, do. At least everybody has the comfort of knowing that customers will not be coming in.
That is very true, ma'am, and I would agree with that. I think the point here is if we're going to offer them to have the opportunity to have the holiday season, and yet if they want to come in, then other employees are going to be using their vacation and they're going to take off. And these individuals would still be coming into the office. So it's really not a lot of difference, other than, you know, things that we're doing now.
Somebody coming in and just sitting there because they wouldn't be...
Right.
Okay. And I can agree with that. You know, if that would happen, I wouldn't want that to happen. But I still, for me personally, I'm in favor of what the 100%, you know, using, we're closed and you use your accrued leave. And like Rita said, you could, you can front-load it for those employees that don't have any leave. And for part-time people, they don't get a full day anyway. They get a portion of that, so, based on how many hours they work. So it would work out.
Yeah, I don't like the idea of them coming in because it's like opening a store and then telling the customer they can't buy anything. If they're sitting there and the customer sees them there and they need something small answered, the guy goes, "Nope, not working." That causes more problems than helps. So if we're going to do it, let's do it the right way.
Rita, was that option looked at doing, just sort of, holiday closure, just disclosing the doors and still having staff work? Was that looked at or is that entered?
To have the holiday closure and have staff work?
Yeah.
It was, but I can tell you from experience, just, we did that in La Mesa when I worked there and in Alcoa, and we just shut down. We did not have the option for employees to work, and that's how it worked. Because some, just like Marlene said, it just, that's what we do.
Was, and then, I don't know, the city manager, the HR director, did you talk to other directors? Did we get like a consensus on this? Like, is everybody in favor of this?
Yes, we did. And I think Marlene can speak to that.
Yeah, honestly, I'm looking at you, I'm looking at you five over here, six, you know. Is everybody in favor of this, you guys?
Yeah, 100%. And I think it comes down to just a philosophical position of the council. You have a very hard-working staff in this organization. And you could look at this as a benefit, that you're trying to give your staff a little bit of time off. Or you could, you know, continue to operate like we do and just try and milk every single drop of blood out of our employees. I'm just being honest.
I appreciate the bluntness, chief. Yeah, I'm actually in favor of this. I know the Monday, the 23rd of this is kind of a weird anomaly, it looks like. And it's like, why are you coming on a Monday and then not, right? So I guess I can go either way on that part of it. I do want it to be a trial run, though, you guys, is do it for one year and then obviously bring it back. And I think subsequently, it needs to come back every year for approval, basically, opposed to being on the books. You know, it doesn't have to be November. It can be in, I don't know, but...
I would disagree with that.
Well, once we, you know, once we get the trial done, yeah.
And the reason being, moving forward is because people can then plan their vacations.
Right, but...
They can then plan their vacations and know, and plan accordingly. Like, Councilmember Koval had stated, you know, it's, there's, this year would be a little bit, doing it the first time and this late in the season.
That's what I'm getting at. I don't know, one is going to be enough.
It's not just the people that just started working. It's people that have already used their time off because they got sick or a child got sick or something of nature. I don't want to penalize them because they already used their time and now, and we are closed, so they can't work. I don't want to penalize those people, but if there's no work for them to do, also, I'm sitting here twiddling their thumbs just because they had no more time off accrued. And they don't want to borrow from next year because things pop up in family lives that they don't want to borrow from Peter to pay Paul. So...
That's a good point because what if someone, I mean, like, there's a lot of employees here and there's a lot of different life circumstances. And if they use their time off this, during this time, even at a 50/50 split. I mean, I've definitely had employees that were always close to the line of how much vacation time they had accrued. And they were front-loading all the time and they were waiting for the beginning of the year. And these are longtime employees. Just, that's just how their life worked. And, you know, you've got a wedding to come up. You want to take a two-week vacation and it doesn't happen to be during this time.
Childcare is a good example.
Yeah, so, and there are, some people have children and some people don't. There's different scenarios in this. It's not, certainly not me wanting, if that was the impression that I gave, like, you know, sucking employees' blood dry or anything like that. It was trying to, you know...
It was farmer trotter.
Well, whoever. To make sure that it's fair, I definitely, as an employee for a long time that always had to come to work when a lot of people didn't have to come to work, I'm sensitive to this issue. And hearing that the finance department would be working anyway, then that doesn't seem equitable to me. And I want to make sure that any benefit, this is a benefit, there is a cost. And any benefit with a cost should be, have some sort of fairness. And it is kind of late in the game to be proposing this. So there's, a whole year's almost passed. Well, pretty much. So that's where I'm coming from. I don't, I'm not opposed to being closed during this time. Just how does this work? Have questions?
Well, again, that's why I asked if there's a consensus across the board here. If everybody, the employees, you know, I'm definitely willing to do it on trial.
That was my motion.
Yeah.
So where did we?
My motion was a 50/50 split with the first year being a trial year. And I sub-move.
Do we have, do the employees have accrued vacation time already accrued to? Like, every single employee has enough vacation on the books, except for a brand-new person, to do this?
Probably not every single employee, no. So there would be either, I mean, they would have to have the leave front-loaded and where they would, you know, down the road, they would return it, excuse me. But, yeah, not every single employee, no.
I have another question. Was it a topic with all the staff or just at the department head level? How did this work?
So we had a discussion at the department head level and asked them to go back and talk to their team and make sure that there was consensus. There's, I can almost guarantee you, there's never going to be a time when we have an employee who has, every employee has enough, you know, accrued vacation time to do whatever they need to do. But we do try to work with our team. And it is late in the season. We had originally discussed this to come last May or June. We got into trying to work for a number of other election issues and making sure that all of those things move forward. We had a cyber incident that sort of slowed things down. So we wanted to bring it forward now. It doesn't make any sense to bring it forward in December. And if council wants to move it forward, we'll work with our staff. It is very common with something like this that the first year has a couple of hiccups anyways, just because you're dealing with people and their human schedules. However, if we can make things work this year, then it gives employees a chance to plan for next year and understand what's going on. If you wanted to say, let's not do it now, but try for it in 2025, that's a really long time for people to try to figure something out. My preference would be if we're going to go for it, let's try to do it now and work out the kinks. And then for 2025, if it works, if this is a trial and if it works out well, then we can look at bringing it back early in the year so that the employees have plenty of time to plan for it. Yes, sir.
And what does success look like with this? So how would you know, or how would we know that this has worked?
My thought, Councilwoman, for success is to make sure that the employees have an opportunity to take time off, that the citizens of Santee, other than, you know, they walk to the door and they see there's a sign that is closed, but there's a number to call, that they can get through on the app, that we have good advertising to the community and to developers coming in to do work here at City Hall, that there's going to be a downtime. As you noted, there are 10 other cities that do this. We can look and take their best management practices. But my goal would be to try to advertise the heck out of this, if council wants to do it, so that it's not a big secret, that people understand what the hours are and when they could get the best service. And that our staff team knows that the priority is still to respond if there is an urgent need, whether you call that a health and safety need or an urgent need of any other type. I was laughing because you said, well, how would we reach the staff? Right here. We do it every single day. Oh, gosh, there's a problem here, there's a problem. We would still try to do that. If there was something normal that we would schedule a staff meeting or something, you're correct, ma'am, we would push those off and do those at another time. But the goal is to make sure that the citizens of Sante still feel that they get served, even though they can't come in and sit down and talk to somebody during that timeframe. That would be the goal.
Isn't there a reduction in people coming into the offices during this time anyways?
Yes, sir. Last year, I asked staff, when there was a request to do this last Christmas season, I asked staff, other secretaries, to make a list of how many people came into the office. The numbers were less than 15 or 20 for like two weeks, short visits. And most of the visits came to our engineering and planning and building offices because Intergov was just getting up and moving, if you recall. People were trying to figure, how do I do this? What's happening? That was the majority of the calls that we got. If you note, we do have an agenda to get out on the following Wednesday for our city council meeting in January. So we're not proposing anything with that timeframe after the first of the year. That's not a part of the proposal at all. And there's just not a lot of people. Our parks are not very busy. The weekends are a great time for sports tournaments. If any of you have children, boy, those holiday weekends are when everybody's out there playing soccer or, you know, something like that. So staff that would be involved with those processes are still going to have to work, but maybe they don't have to work an eight-hour shift. Maybe they can go in for two or three hours, get that taken care of, and then they can go home. So they would still have some benefit of having a holiday, if you will.
And that's, that's a couple of the notes that I wrote down, too. What I would want to not have happened is have like a loaded agenda because, you know, you know, staff's closed this five days and, you know, we're every two weeks.
I think we'll just bring the DIFs and we won't have anything else.
So, yeah, you know, I wouldn't want to have light agenda, loaded agenda. I still expect that those be balanced. I wrote availability of key services, how would they be? How would those people that have to work during this time, you know, be made whole? Communicating the message on this short amount of time closed to the public. So those are the concerns that I have about it. And if it's been thought through, then, you know, I'm obviously willing to listen to it, see how it goes. I would like to have some kind of measure of success, though, versus someone saw a sign on a door and they, you know, they didn't. My goal would that their needs are met, whatever those needs are.
I have an idea for that because I think one of the things that we should also do is, as if we go through, when we go through this, is that we look at the number of Intergov, you know, issues come across, whether it's a request for inspection or whatever, application for anything. The number that come across through there versus the number that we had about 15 or whatever it was last year, look at the difference and whether or not any of those could have or should have been, you know, resolved at, you know, by somebody coming in. And then get all that in a report later on. Because we should also get some update or report anyways on how well Intergov is working right now and what kind of response we're having versus overall in the past with people coming in. Because it all kind of ties together on our milestone experience.
Mr. Mayor, staff would be happy to put together a report on, if you wanted to approve moving forward with this this year, on what impacts we saw, whether it's customers coming to the counter, people, you know, voicemails, how many times we had to call people in. We'll do the best we can to get you a full report so that you have it to consider.
I think that answers part of your question about how do you measure success? And we're going to have to go through this in order to identify our measures of success, I think.
Absolutely. I mean, one concern, obviously, like you mentioned before, was billing inspections, right? So we're shut down for almost two weeks or, you know, two, you know, whatever, eight days, whatever it is, that, you know, we can't serve our customers. Mayor, I'm going to take a guess. Hopefully, we're going to notify all our people who have active permits that will be closed during that period, right? So they can make their proper arrangements for their, you know, inspections of their projects.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Trotter, that's what we kind of already do in advance with the holidays.
Right.
So the way I've been kind of looking at it, as we've been discussing it, is we already have four-day weekends multiple times a year with Christmas, depending on when it falls, and Thanksgiving. It's just going to be a few more of those days, and we still handle those things and we notify them in advance. So they already know this is coming for those kinds of things. And it's just, just going to be a little bit longer in this case. And we found, like, you, you had mentioned, our staff on board were like, you know, the, the majority of my store, in the entirety of the engineering staff are in support, just because we're often relied on during those times to get things done. And I think I've mentioned it before, I have numerous staff members that are getting forced, including myself, to take time off because we feel like we don't have time to take it off because there's so much going on. Kind of to clue in with the chief here. You know, that's a lot of our situation. I got four or five employees that I have to tell them to take time off or they're going to lose it every month.
Well, and I just wanted to say, as somebody who used to work for the city of La Mesa, we did have a closure. We told everybody in advance. It was posted on, Main Star is La Mesa's Intergov, right? So there was a banner that was put on Intergov, there was a banner that was put on the website. And then we included everything in our signatures, right? Please note that, you know, the, the department will be closed from this time. It just becomes a regular part of conversation. Make sure you get your permits and is there anything else that you need before the city closes. And so by giving us, I know it, obviously, we probably would have preferred it in March to know, but to know now is enough time for us to work with the people that come into our department and just let them know, make sure we provide them with services before, you know, we close as opposed to after.
Yeah, this goes back to something I've talked about over the years. And, you know, those in law enforcement will know this. And there was actually a captain that I worked for, and he, he described it this way, you know, we keep being asked to do more and more with less and less. So that pretty soon, we're going to be asked to do everything with nothing at all. And so I think that goes to your point there about, you know, having a staff that works their butts off. And, you know, this is just another way for us to say thank you.
Yeah.
If nothing else, just to say thank you for all the hard work. And I, and I know many of the council members walk through and tell staff on a regular basis, hey, thanks, appreciate the work you do. But, you know, this is more like putting our money where the mouth is. And I do have a motion on this. I'm going to second that motion. Any other discussion? I'm going to call for the vote.
Call for it.
Okay, let's, uh, put the vote up there and vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Plan your days off. Okay. God, we're getting close, aren't we? Does anybody need a break? Oh, he does. All right. That goes to item number 21, request to approve a resolution authorizing a professional service agreement with InterWest Consulting Group, Inc. for specialized building professional services and finding this action not to a subject under the California Environmental Quality Act. To be done during the time off for employees, no, just kidding.
Motion approved.
Second, we're just, we're just extending, so it's second.
Yep.
Any speaker slips?
No speaker, sir.
Thank you. Please vote.
Good job, Aaron.
Sold-out crowd. Thank you.
You going to report out that vote?
Motion carries with four i's, Councilmember McNellis.
Absent?
Absent.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to item number 21. That's a resolution authorizing city manager execute a professional service agreement with DUDAC Incorporated for preparation of an update to the general plan land use element. Michael.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The item before you tonight is a request to authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with DUDAC Incorporated for the amount of $645,000 or $649,645 for an update to our land use element. Our current land use element was last updated in 2003, and currently it has a horizon date of 2020. So it's a little out of date. So this update to the land use element would include looking at current conditions, reflecting current demographics and projected demographics, and also looking at on-the-ground conditions and development patterns, as well as current planning best practices, including looking at potential vertical mixed-use development at strategic locations. It also allows us to align the land use element with other elements that have been recently updated, including the housing element and mobility element. And it would also put us on a path toward updating other general plan elements on a timeline to ensure that there's consistency across all elements. So as you may recall, back last year in August, you authorized a submittal for grant application to Sandag, the San Diego Association of Governments. And we applied for the full amount allowed for $650,000 to update our land use element. And October 2023, we got great news that we were awarded the full amount. And then later, in, in early, earlier this year, in February, you know, when the state budget was being drafted, we received notice from Sandag that they were rescinding our grant. And so, and so back in October 2023, we were actually working with Sandag on a notice to proceed and get started on the land use element update. So we lost a few months from then to now. But then we got the good news that the state restored the funding and that we'd be getting the grant after all. So it brings us to, let's see, so in August 2024, Sandag did finally give us a notice to proceed on this particular effort to update our land use element using this grant.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And then that brings us to today. We are on a constrained timeline, and so we decided to use.
Okay, motion approved then.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any, council, any?
No speakers.
Speaker slips? No, no speaker slips. Any other council comments?
Good job.
Not hearing any. Did you quit pushing that speaker button? Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Good job, Michael.
Thank you.
That's all you had to say. You were on a time constraint. Got that done quicker.
You know, you talk faster, we could, got that done faster, too. Okay, that takes us to.
No speaker, sir.
No speakers. Okay, thank you. Yeah, we've already done 23, so let's go to city council reports.
Nothing to report.
And I don't have anything. Vice Mayor?
Actually, I just want to bring to attention to the public that this past Veterans Day here, that the new banners are up on the bridge, goes over Santee Lakes on Mass Boulevard. So if you get a chance to go out there and take the city's tour and see all our hometown hero banners, because it continues to grow from Carleton Hills, you know, all the way to the city boundaries. And really, really proud of, to see those up there every four months, so.
Excellent. Councilmember McNellis?
No, sir.
City manager?
Just very briefly, for those that are going to be watching this as a replay or staying up late at night, the next activity that brings in a lot of families here into the city of Santee is Friday, November 22nd, 5:30 to 8:30. We do have our tree lighting ceremony at Santee Trolley Square, Fun for All. Lots of activities going on. Our community services department works very hard on that. We encourage everybody to come on down. It is free and you can enjoy yourselves for a very limited cost, meaning nothing, and enjoy yourselves with your family. Following that, on Thursday, December 5th, just for those who are interested, 4:30 to 7:30 at Trolley Square, we also have selfies with Santa. And if you are a child or if you just have a childlike personality and want to have a good time, you can still go sit on Santa's lap and have a good day. Thank you very much.
City attorney?
No report.
Great, thank you. And not hearing anything else, we're going to call this meeting adjourned.